Good evening, I'd like to call to order the May 16th meeting of the Foxborough School Committee. First on the agenda is open public comment. When I looked at the list a minute ago, I didn't see any names. Is anyone here for open public comment? Making sure we covered our bases. Seeing none and hearing none, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is approval of our May 2nd minutes. I think it's May 2nd minutes. Any comments or questions by anyone, or motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from May 2nd.
Thank you, Sarah. A second?
Second.
Second by Rob. Any further discussion? All in favor of approval of the May 2nd minutes is 4-0. Probably should have started with mentioning that Mr. Ritter is not here this evening, is not feeling well. And like to see Grace here. Grace, welcome again. I know we haven't seen you for a couple of weeks. And Nathan, you're back as well too, so thank you. I think we've got a full slate here tonight, so thanks all. First, next is 6:40 is our teaching and learning moment. And would love to call up to the microphone, or have Dr. Burdos call them up. No Place for Hate, led by Principal Ms. Karen Frazier. Please, come on up everyone. Thank you.
So while Ms. Frazier's coming up, we've got also some of her teachers with her. Mr. Williams, and Ms. Forensic, and some of Hearn students. And they're going to be speaking with you this evening about No Place for Hate, as you said. And this is, we're thinking about our plan for success, and under our fourth pillar, which is diversity, equity, inclusion. One of our strategic objectives under that pillar is to expand our DEI initiatives, and look for ways for students to experience freedom and full expression through how they are, through a lens of compassion, and through a lens of connection and diversity. And I think that you'll hear that, and that it speaks to our plan for success, and it also speaks to the Hearn School Improvement Plan, and something they've been working on all year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Frazier.
Thank you. We'll start by sharing where the work started, and then we're going to have the students talk a lot about the work that we've been doing throughout the year. So you may remember earlier in the year when I presented the school improvement plan, I talked about our Hearn Middle School Constitution. And a lot of this work that we're doing as a club really stemmed from the Constitution. So just as a reminder, at the beginning of the year, all of our homerooms worked together to come up with classroom expectations, and what everybody felt were the core values for the classroom. And then we had two delegates from each homeroom come down and work with myself, the assistant principals, our counselors, to develop grade level expectations. And then we had two delegates from each grade level come. We had like a constitutional delegation come into a constitutional convention, and develop our Hearn Middle School Constitution. So we've got a copy of it here. The right-hand side may be a little bit hard to see, but ultimately, what our students came up with were their top five core values as a school, where the things that we expect of ourselves and of each other. So be respectful and kind, be responsible and engage learners, be inclusive, be safe, and be the best version of ourselves. On the right-hand side, and that smaller type, those really are examples that our students came up with of what each of those values really looks like in school. So the be inclusive piece is really what we're here to talk about tonight, because that is something that was really important to our students in particular. To our eighth-grade students, who really spent a lot of time talking about what it means to be inclusive, and what an inclusive school looks like. And that is where the work of No Place for Hate came about. So No Place for Hate is a program that is initiated by the ADL, the Anti-Defamation League, with the goal being that schools are working with students, so that students are leading the work in anti-discrimination, anti-bias, anti-bullying. So we have some of our eighth-grade leaders here, and some of the teachers who have been supporting the club as well. Maybe everyone could introduce themselves, and then we can talk about the work the club's been doing.
Yeah. I'm Noah Cohen, and I'm an eighth grader at the Ahern.
I am Megan Forensic, and I am the fifth and sixth-grade technology teacher at the Ahern.
Oh, it's my turn. I'm Violet, and I'm the eighth grader from Ahern.
What was your name again? Go ahead, speak it up so I can hear it.
I'm Violet, and I'm eighth grade from Ahern.
Thank you.
I'm Sasha Urrigan, I'm an eighth grader at the Ahern.
Dan Williams, eighth grade, social studies at the Ahern.
Thank you.
So this is a photo of some of our club members. You see some of them are here with us tonight, standing in front of a bulletin board that this group designed. I think maybe Violet, you were hoping to talk about that a little bit?
No Place for Hate Club is a club that is...
Can you come a little closer to the microphone? Don't be nervous.
Turn that a little bit.
You can do it, don't be nervous.
She's practiced, this is great.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you so much.
We're all friends.
No Place for Hate Club is a sponsor of hate-free environment for now and the future. We were striving to understand everybody's individual concern. And we were discussing about how to improve our school environment, and we wanted to prevent the discrimination and show how our school is respectful to all different ethnic backgrounds.
No Place for Hate, this is like a national club. There's actually 1,600 schools nationwide. I sort of put the numbers in, it's 1.4 million students. So that's like about half the population of like Nevada. It's huge. And we want to be part of that. And I stressed to Karen at the beginning, this club, we want to put the students in the driver's seat, you know? And build a movement towards positive change. And that's why we're here tonight, because this is so important. It's student-driven, it's collaborative, and it gives us access to tools to be proactive against bias and bullying, and not only helps teachers with the resources, but students too. And they can lead the program. When we have the meetings, the students, it's student-driven. You know, we're going to go off of what they talk about with us. And I think that's a big part of this club, and how important it is to us, and I'm sure you can agree. And I think we can gain a greater respect of differences in our school. You know, it's sort of, it's tailored to our unique school culture, and how we can come together, you know? So I'm really proud of what we've done so far. And this board is just a great example of how we've really come together.
So what you see on the board, this is right when you walk in the door of the Ahern. This is No Place for Hate on the top. Our constitution is posted on the right-hand side. And then all of those hands you see have a promise from the students. The students have all signed an individual hand, that are, all the hands are posted up there. And the promise is that inclusivity piece in our constitution. So some examples are, "I will seek to gain understanding of those who are different from me." "I'll celebrate differences." "I'll consider everyone else's ideas." "I'll speak out against prejudice and discrimination." "I'll promote respect for all people." So our students in homeroom talked about what this is all about, and what this really means, and how it fits in the context of our constitution, and then had the option to sign, that they promised to participate in that, and to really be proactive in that work. And just about all of the students and staff signed, so that was pretty cool.
I love it. Kind of shows a sort of like safety and belonging, and they worked really hard. And I'm proud of everyone in this club, and our students at our school.
For the Humans of the Ahern Project, we interviewed students and faculty to showcase our diversity and different parts of our identities. The interviews were displayed on the Daily Two, our live morning broadcast.
Additionally, eighth graders shared poems about their identities and beliefs from an English project.
So you might be familiar with the Humans of New York, the Humans of New York Project, which is a social media project. There's a photographer in New York City who goes around and interviews different people who live there, just to gather their stories. So we've built a Humans of the Ahern Project, with that as the inspiration. The goal really being to share all of our stories, and to celebrate our differences, and to really build compassion and empathy among our students. So we did bring a video, just two examples. We have an interview of one of our staff members, Mr. Williams, who's here, and an interview of one of our students, who's sharing a poem that she wrote in her English class, so we'll take a look.
What is your name?
My name's Dan Williams.
How many years have you been at the Ahern?
This is my 18th year at the Ahern.
What grades do you teach?
I teach eighth grade, social studies. And I just answered your next question. Keep going.
What languages do you know how to speak?
I speak English fluently, and Spanish almost fluently.
What languages do you speak at home?
English and toddler.
Who do you live with?
My toddler, who's Casey, who is two, and my daughter Josie, who is six, and my wife, who is Mrs. Williams.
What is the best piece of advice you have ever received?
Best piece of advice I've ever received was from my father, who said, "Practice 30 minutes every day." Practice 30 minutes every day. And at the time, it was clarinet and piano, and a lot of the times, I didn't really want to do it, but I thank him for it to this day, because music is still a big part of my life, and it's because I practiced for 30 minutes every day.
What is your favorite memory from when you were at middle school?
I think it was a class trip we took to New York. It was seventh or eighth grade, I forget, but it was a lot of fun, I'll never forget.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kai. I'm an eighth grader, and for part of my English project this year, I wrote a poem about my identity as a person, and what I believe in. The key parts of this that I hope come through the most is my passion for art, such as music and theater, and my journey in self-discovery, and how you can discover yourself too. I believe in self-expression, the right to blossom into your own sense of self, different from others around you. I believe in my dreams and passions, and the mountain I climb to achieve them. I believe in music, whether it be in chorus, theater, or blasting from my headphones. I believe in all forms of art, and how inextricably bonds us together. I believe in equality, in the fight to get there. Peaceful protests and activism, a fist rising into the air, and yells echoing with it. I believe in the warm, comforting feeling inside me whenever I'm at my best, which is with friends and family I love close to me. Joy and laughter coated in the air we breathe, lingering in the struggle space. I believe in the complexity that is my family. My dad's dark brown skin, my mom's light and pale, my houses separate from each other, and the experiences I've received due to this, and people entering and leaving my life as well. Like a bird in a nest, flying away when the winds call to them. The good times and the bad times that these experiences cause. I believe in love, whatever way it comes to me. I believe in me, and all the others I see daily, that one day, we can all go where we intend to go in our lives. Thank you for listening to my poem.
So those were just a couple of examples. I'll just talk for a moment about the project. This is a wonderful project, this Humans of the Ahern. The interview questions that you heard were written by members of the No Place for Hate Club, and we have a series of questions that were asked to students as well, which are essentially the same with a couple of little tweaks. Help me out, guys. I think we've interviewed over 10 faculty members, maybe close to 15 faculty members, and you know, five or six students so far, and we've aired, I think, five of them on the Daily Two so far, which if you don't know, I'll indulge myself a little bit. I happen to be the faculty advisor of the Broadcasting Club. We have this wonderful opportunity, this wonderful platform, to communicate to the student body, thanks to the support of Foxborough Cable Access, so shout out to FCA. Thanks, guys. And so we do this broadcast each morning, and so we can feature these little clips, sort of celebrating and highlighting the diversity of our student body and the faculty. So that's what the Humans of the Ahern Project is all about, and we look forward to rolling out, you know, a bunch more interviews as the spring winds up. And Sasha and Noah did a lot of the interviewing, so good job, guys.
Thank you.
That's it? Oh, thank you very much. Wonderful. What a great presentation. And thank you all for being here tonight with us. Committee members, any questions or thoughts?
No, just really awesome project, and everybody here just shows a lot of passion. Thank you for being here tonight. It's really important.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. I love this subject matter, diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging, all things that I think we continue to develop, and are hopefully develop as we get older and older. I'm 58, I'm still surprised at ways that I think I'm not biased, but I realize that I am. I realize how important it is for me, at my age, to still feel like I belong, and still feel like I'm accepted for whoever I am. So you guys are laying great found work now, so thank you very much for that. My question for you is, since you started this project, what might have surprised you about what you've learned about the community at the Ahern, or about your students, some of your faculty members? Is there anything that stood out to you? And anybody can answer that.
I don't know that I would say I've been surprised, but pleased to see how many people want to be part of this work, and want to be part of the conversation, and sharing their stories, and contributing to the conversation as we move forward. So not surprise, surprise, but you know, pleased by the reaction that we've gotten.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I think I was surprised to see that, or to hear that we have staff that came, that went to the Ahern, like, for middle school, like, they've been here for a while, and they were there as students.
There were probably a lot, I don't know. I mean, it is Foxborough, so... Did I say that out loud? I can't even imagine. So no, that, yes, we are very fortunate that we have a lot of teachers that have grown up in the Foxborough Schools and then come back, because it's such a great place to go to school. So absolutely, thank you. Anybody else?
I think one of the things that's been really nice is that the group has been meeting for a few months now, but in the last few weeks, where I think we've really started to develop a community among the group, really being able to have a safe space where we can have some really open and honest conversations about students' experiences at school, and looking at how our students can lead some solutions to, whether it be a problem, or just a challenge, or something that's coming up in their experiences that we'd like to change to be more positive. So there've been some great conversations, I think we're learning a lot from our students.
And one more. So you guys are all in eighth grade, so this is just for the students, all right? You guys are all in eighth grade, assuming you're all moving on to some place in ninth grade, hopefully Foxborough High School, but what do you, are you planning on taking some of what you've done here, and trying to introduce that to whatever you're doing next year, in some way? That's a pressure question, sorry. Maybe, you want to think about it? Okay, I'm sure that you will, in some way, shape, or form. So thank you. Thank you for indulging my questions.
No, great job, guys. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I just, I want to say thank you for focusing tonight's discussion on inclusivity. I think the takeaway for us as a community, and the people here tonight, and for all students, is what the value of inclusivity does to a building. Sometimes tough to measure, sometimes tough to quantify, but it absolutely changes the atmosphere about how we exist and show up each and every day. To Noah, Violet, and Sasha, thank you for being leaders in that. So just connecting your leadership to what I just said, I think your opportunity to lead makes a massive change for a whole bunch of other people. And I think that's really, really critical in any kind of our schools, when we do that. Ms. Forensic, I just wanted to point out, you said something in your presentation about access to tools. So another takeaway for the community would be to hear why these projects come in, why we combine the projects of our faculty with our students, to access proven tools, proven methods, or opportunity for methods we might not have seen, to implement and lead. So thank you for recognizing that, because I think that's what the faculty members help to do, to build the strength of the students. Thank you all so much for leading and presenting to us, it's really important for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Great job, everyone.
Great job. Thank you. I think next on the agenda is a student update from Nathan. And Nathan, thanks for being part of this portion of the agenda. One of the things that happens on many school committees, including ours, is that we have student representatives from high school-age students, and that's kind of standard across the state of Massachusetts. But also, committees can be run in different manners and different ways to offer opportunity for student input. You know, sometimes it might be under other matters or different places here, but you know, after some reflection and thought, I think a good spot to solidify, solidify your opportunity and voice on this committee would be something like this. So Nathan, an opportunity now in the agenda to insert some student input, so thank you for leading.
Thank you. So I had short notice this time, I found out yesterday, which is okay. So we're, I'm just going to like talk a little bit about what me and Grace plan on doing in the future. I want this to like be a time where we can like bring student voice to the table from all different schools, not only the high school. And I also want this to try and be like an opportunity to get more students involved, so that more students are interested in being here, and interested in hearing about like what's happening in the community, and how they can get involved. Basically, just like stay in the loop of like what's happening in the school. And if they have any thoughts, like they want to share with people who will listen, I think this would be a great time to share. That's about it.
Well, thank you very much, Nathan. And to the other committee members, I know Nathan thought about this as your personal interest for voice. I think you brought it up to Dr. Burdos about voice and your presence in that, maybe for your future voice as well, as you develop that. So thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's update.
So my superintendent's update is going to be mostly focused on students and recognizing some of the accomplishments that have just taken place. So I'm going to actually invite here in a second, some up to the guest table as part of this, but before I do that, I'm just going to give a couple of other updates before I have our live updates, if you will. So the first one that I wanted to mention was based on our art department, so if any of you are up at Patriots Place, and you go over towards the area where, one of my favorites, Crumble Cookie, in that area, what you're going to see is a huge mural banner that's designed by our Senior Ink class, but the designer actually was Lydia Stone, and it was with the FHS National Honor Society and Senior Ink. And they created a mural that's part of, it's this, let me just read it, so I don't get it inaccurate here. It is to showcase throughout the summer, it's presented by the Graphic Design II class and the Senior Ink. It also is connected with our Patriots Place director, who you'll recognize, this name, Director of Marketing, Diana Griffin, Digital Marketing Manager, Sean Briggs, along with Gillette Stadium's Business Development Team, Lindsay Coniff, one of our former students, Casey Epstein, and Julia Pol... I always say Julia's name wrong, I've known her for years now. So Paglerula is her last name. But this is a 232 by 96-foot mural that was designed, it's the largest project that our high school designers have ever done. It celebrates this year's record-breaking summer concert series that's taking place. I know there's a big concert even this, you know, weekend that's coming up. But anyway, be sure to stop by the North Marketplace to see this mural that was designed by Lydia Stone in our Senior Ink class, to have up there. It's really a fantastic representation of the artists that we have at Foxborough High School. So just wanted to mention and announce their mural and banner that is there. The next one that I wanted to recognize is our students that were in New York over the weekend at Jazz at Lincoln Center for essentially Ellington. I had the privilege of being with them and hearing them perform live, and we've talked about how they've been invited into this very prestigious, it's an amazing competition. It's, we know, 15 bands from across the country that are invited in. Foxborough High School has been there 21 times. We're the second, I believe, most appearing jazz ensemble that has been there. And we hear it at the pops, we hear it at the concerts, the caliber of our students, and all of the time and effort that they put in along with our teachers. When you hear it with the other 14 bands from across the country, it is amazing to think that these are high school students. Really, I mean, it's a lot of time and effort, and support by parents to support them to be there as well, but they were amazing. The awards that are also given, I just wanted to recognize, for our sax section, saxophone section, they received an honorable mention. Liam Ernst received outstanding drums. Emma Lacy, outstanding clarinet. Honorable mention for tenor saxophone for Nola Gooch, sorry, for NOLA, an outstanding tripler, which is tripling on instruments, Emma Lacy. So they were absolutely outstanding, and it was just such a privilege to hear them. And I have, I've always had a great appreciation for our teachers and everything that they do, but to see them on these days, and with the students, and what they were able to do, and thinking about all of the layers that go into this, from the music that the teachers, our director, Erin Bush, all that he has done in selecting the repertoire, and the music, and all that goes into it. But to see it in that beautiful place, it was quite amazing. So just want to congratulate our teachers who do such an outstanding job, the students who are absolutely amazing, and then the parents who support them to be there, because it really does take a community to do that, and it was outstanding. So, and then to continue with amazing students, I'd like to invite Stephanie up to the table, maybe along with Dr. Donovan, and our mom, if she's interested in coming up, and then her teacher, Ms. Janie Goodwin, as well. So Stephanie, I can't wait to provide this update here with you. So Stephanie's teacher is Ms. Goodwin, who's one of our social studies teachers at the high school. And in March, for the Massachusetts History Day, she presented on that day, and she presented with her research, and it was titled, "Frontiers in Nigerian Independence: The Woman's War of 1929." She received the highest score there. And then as a result of that, then in April, she presented at the state competition, where, again, the highest score. And as a result of that, had an invitation to go to Nationals in Washington DC, which will take place after graduation in June. So I just want to give a minute and provide, I don't know, Ms. Goodwin, if you want to provide a little bit of information too, and recognize, because this is the first time that we've had a student be able to achieve this, so it's quite amazing.
Yes, Stephanie did amazing. For those of you who don't know, National History Day is an annual project that students have an opportunity to do, and it's all done outside of school, and they have an opportunity to research any topic that they choose. And Steph, you know, I always say the best projects are those which people have a passion about, and that really comes through in the project, and projects where people like myself and others who look at it can really learn something. And I think Stephanie absolutely hit the mark on that. Her project was exceptional, everybody who's had a chance to look at it, just the highest scores alone, you know, show how amazing her work really, really was. And I'm grateful to be a part of that, especially that she got a chance to share some of her history with us, and this is really, her work is, and her research into this Nigerian, the 1929 Women's War in Nigeria, it really deserves a place in world history, and I'm so proud that she got to share it with everybody.
May I add just one final thing? So over the weekend, Stephanie was contacted and her family by the Massachusetts Historical Society, who will be sponsoring her entire trip to Washington. She's the first recipient. She's the first recipient of that award ever in the Commonwealth.
It's amazing.
So it's just really special. We've never had a student at the high school that I'm aware of that's moved to this level before, let alone have such success at the state level. And it's just, it's an incredible work. We put it out in the newsletter a couple of times this year, and we can share the link, again, with the community, but the project is really incredible. So, and we'll be wishing her well in June, when she goes to Washington. We said again.
Which I'm sure she'll kill it there. Which I'm sure she'll kill it there again, too, like she did in the others.
Can you tell us about the experience? Or do you want to expand on maybe the experience of doing it? The presentations you've done and/or anything about the project?
So part of the project, like the first couple of months of it, I had to research, like do like the initial research to like start building the website because my project was a website. And so in that research, I like, I had to like look through like a lot of historical domains. And there's not a lot of like Nigerian history domains. So it was pretty hard to find some, a lot of reliable sources. But I eventually found some things. And then at the regional competition, I, after I moved on, I was really happy. So I found some more research and added more to my website. And I'm very proud of what I've accomplished. Thank you.
And did you just present the web, you probably presented the website, but then did you also add, you added some background on the presentations as well?
Yeah, I got.
Is there a certain time limit that you have or a certain limit or you have to do?
Yeah, so the website is limited to 1,200 student words. So most of my words on the website are just quotes. And my interview was only 10 minutes for each competition because you turn in your website like a couple of weeks before the actual competition so they can like look through it and read it. And then they ask you questions for the 10 minutes that you're there. And yeah.
That's great.
How did you pick this topic?
I picked this topic because I wanted to bring out like an African history topic because I don't hear a lot of African history in history classes. And I found this topic especially interesting because the women in the war who fought against British colonialism are from the same tribe I am in Nigeria. So that had like a very personal connection.
And now, because you said you, from the regional to the state level, you got access or you found or shared more information. Are you able to make more updates or people, are you finding more things now that you're moving on to the next level and continuing to update?
Yeah, I'm definitely finding more things now.
Exciting. Congratulations.
Thank you.
What an accomplishment. Where will you be going next year? You're a senior, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to UMass Amherst.
That's awesome. That's awesome. We'll keep you in Massachusetts.
Good, we need to keep you, yeah, we'll keep you here.
Yeah.
I just, we also want to thank Ms. Goodwin for all of her work this year and chephering Stephanie through this process. It's just been incredible. So she does, it's a totally volunteer thing on Ms. Goodwin's part. And it's really an incredible amount of support she's provided. We're very grateful for all of it.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for those efforts as well. And as I just said to the last group, thank you for your individual efforts personally for you, but for what it shows about Foxborough students. I think there's some inherent leadership in the depth and topics and interests that any individual student does. So thanks for being a big part of that. That's why you're here tonight. And that's why it's important for the community to see you and be recognized.
Thank you.
Thank you for being you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Good evening and thank you. Thank you.
Those are my updates. You can't beat that.
Can't beat that.
I know.
And maybe we'll hear some more in a month or so, right? We'll get an update in a couple of months. Well, thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have our wellness committee update.
More great stuff.
I know.
This is great.
We got a full agenda.
Well, thank you for having us. I can't believe it's been a year since we've been here. Just yesterday. But we're excited to be here. I know last time we came, we shared that we had just taken a graduate course on the whole school, whole community, whole child model. So we were going to reignite our wellness committee. And we have, and here they are, part of them. But we are excited because we started in October inviting, we have a whole new committee with administrators, teacher. We have a YMCA representative. We have our wellness direct, uh, community director. And we also have our wellness department head on the wellness committee. So there's a lot of wellness going on. We're all going to go and just kind of highlight some of the things that we've accomplished over the year. As always, you know, when you reflect, you think there's always more you want to do. But I think that's a good thing because it leaves us always trying to improve. One of the things, we were fortunate enough to get a grant and use some grant funding to do a youth assessment, risk assessment survey. The high school has done theirs already. And the middle school will be doing them this week. It's a company called Pride Plus Survey. We focus the survey on substance use, misuse. Because we have, we have other surveys in the district that we're using. We have surveys Panorama, which is focusing on social emotional health. We also have our Climate and Culture Survey. So we wanted this survey to just focus on drugs and alcohol and nicotine. So it'll be interesting to get those results back. We, we have state mandated screenings that we have to do in seventh grade and ninth grade that focus around substance abuse. But that is done with a nurse, one-on-one meeting. So this is a little bit different in that it's confidential. So it'll be, it'll be interesting to be able to compare the data and then focus our efforts. One of the things we've tackled is vaping this year. We've done a few things surrounding that topic just to educate our students, our parents. We really want to make sure that we're, we're kind of focusing on the preventative stuff and getting to the kids before they start those kind of things. So that's what we've done so far.
So on to food world. It's been quite a year with meals continuing to be free. We have increased, we do about 70, 80% of our student body having lunch with us. So it's about 1,800 lunches a day. So we're like the biggest restaurant in town. 700 breakfasts a day. And we were able to purchase a lot of new equipment this year. A lot of refrigeration, kettles, steamers, warming boxes. So it's, it's been great as far as that goes. We started a share bin at a heron. That was based on some kids asking, you know, they were seeing the food waste going into the trash. A couple of students initiated this, so we brought that back. So that's exciting. So the share bin, it's all wrapped, safe food. It's a refrigerated bin, which the students, if anybody wants any additional food, they're welcome to take it, no questions asked. We developed a new food modification form for parents or students with allergies, food intolerances, because we, we really wanted to tighten it up a bit and have a consistent form so that we can serve those students properly, you know, address their dietary needs accurately. So it has to be signed by a physician, supported by a physician. I've introduced a lot of vegan and vegetarian choices this year, and that's going surprisingly well. I was really surprised. And that's, you know, K-12. Jane Rice, the Taylor Cook manager, is almost famous about the tower gardens. She's presented at the School Nutrition Conference as well as Farm to School Conference during a webinar. And she's helped the Igo Garden Club get their, we had a couple of spare towers that we weren't using. So we brought those to Igo. And she's working with them to help start planting and gardening. Exciting, we were awarded a $10,000 grant for the Northeast Food for Schools Local Foods. The state's been given $3.5 million for this grant. And the food has to be minimally processed from within 400 miles of Massachusetts. So it, you know, it goes like almost up to Canada, down to New York. So the things I'm looking at purchasing are like hydroponic lettuce, main grains, maybe some fish, maybe some local beef. And last but not least, our heron cook manager, Stacy Burke Beck, has won the School Nutrition Association Manager of the Year, both for Massachusetts and New England. So we have an award-winning staff that I'm very proud of and just happy to share that information with you.
Thank you. As far as the stuff going on in the wellness department, we have a ton of things. I was specifically going to talk about one, but just kind of highlight a few things. In our elementary schools, we have our World Dance Performance that Elise McMahon does at the Taylor, which is really great. Linda Portimani with, at the Igo, does her jump off competition, like a hula hoop, jump rope competition. And it was pretty awesome and intense to go experience and watch the excitement level of all the kids and, and just see that, their excitement for being in the gym and being a part of getting their heart rate going. That was great. At the high school, we've got, with support of administration, we've got all of our health and PE teachers certified as trainers of CPR. So now every sophomore will be certified in CPR upon, end of their, you know, their 10th grade health unit. We're also adding, with the help of Bill and Jim, we're going to be adding a ton of cardio equipment. So six treadmills, two ellipticals, two bikes to the weight room that we currently have at the high school, which will be great. It started with a reach out from our special ed department asking for a little bit more from the cardio aspect of getting the kids down there for a little more of the adapted PE. And I went in hoping for one, to be honest with you. I kind of, was kind of hope that we could get together and get one treadmill in. And the support's been unbelievable. And we're going to have a whole new cardio section at the high school, which is going to be great. Child Development just visited the Barrow School the other day. So Colleen Carchee's Child Development Class, she's in her first year at the high school, has been unbelievable as a health teacher and as a teacher. But we kind of threw her into the Child Development Course, having Janelle had been previously teaching that course. And she's off and running with it in an incredible way. Kids are designing their own nurseries with, you know, computer technology. They all went down and read to the students at the preschool. And we're hoping to form a bigger bond, actually, down at the Barrow with that. So we kind of got the initial conversation started of getting the high school kids being able to visit a lot more, not just the one field trip kind of, but get in there regularly and make it something that's a part of that, linking the two groups together. And then we have the Heinrich Hustle tomorrow, the Honors Joe Heinricher. We've got already 250 students signed up to participate. And the money that we're raising is going to go to support our Special Olympics Track and Field Day on June 7th. So a really cool thing, just the Honors Joe is a really good friend and mentor of mine from when I first started here. And unfortunately, when he passed away, we started this race pre-COVID. This will be our fifth running of the race now. And this is our second highest total. We had 273, we're hoping to beat, they can still sign up tomorrow morning. So anybody, Nate, Grace, you want to tell some of your friends. But if we can get over 273, that'd be great, but feeling really great. But the, but the real reason I was supposed to talk, so after I went on a long run on there, was we had a Senior Safe Choice Day in March. And actually Nate was a part of, we brought in people. So Amy, Teresa, Petty, myself, and the wellness staff, really. We brought in and planned a day for our seniors. This is something we had done in the past and had kind of gone by the wayside with COVID. But we were able to bring in and actually I think make it better than it has been in the past. We brought in four different speakers. So first was Chris Repold from Personal Best Karate. Karen Hazard, who's our clinical educator for the Mass Department of Public Health and Sexual Assault. I don't know Wes's last name, but a gentleman named Wes from Minding Your Mind. He was a speaker from an outside organization. Kate Woods and our Foxborough Fire Department. So the topics that they discussed were self-defense, you know, consent and the legal aspects of relationships. Kate Woods and, and like I said, in the Foxborough Fire Department did a Stop the Bleed and a First Aid. And, you know, then we had Wes speaking about mental health issues and anxiety. And he's a local student from Sharon, who actually went to Catholic Memorial, and just talked about his experiences with anxiety and how it's just normalizing that kids are going through a lot. And you're not alone out there. And I look at it as more like a day of empowerment because the seniors, so basically the seniors would take, we gave, given the whole day, pretty much, except for one period. They would go through 40-minute stations, if you will, or workshops for each of these people, get an exposure to each one of them. Culminating in, what we had was 18 junior trained, we trained 18 juniors in the One Love Presentation. I'm familiar with One Love, but it was an organization started in 2010 by a woman named Yurlee Loves Family, who had unfortunately been murdered by her then-boyfriend, ex-boyfriend. And the mother started this to kind of help people identify the signs of healthy and unhealthy relationships. That's really the theme. And it's a pretty heavy movie that the kids are exposed to watch. And then what I think is the beauty of the whole thing is that students like Nathan and 17 other juniors were our leaders of the post-video discussions. And we were monitoring and watching to make sure it went in the right direction and be there for support. But it was a student-led, where they'd get in groups of maybe, you know, 12 to 15 in a circle, you know, choosing whether, you know, they had choice of kind of what group they wanted to be. Amy did an unbelievable job of separating everyone based on, we did a survey before to talk about what group you'd be most comfortable talking in. We made changes on the spot. But students like Nathan and 17 others, I mean, to talk about, you know, these hard issues, they were incredible. It was an incredible performance. It was two or three of them in each group, you know, and it was a group of seniors led by juniors. So they, the goal of the whole program, the end of the day, was let's get these seniors, as they're leaving us, a little bit extra prepared for whatever they, you know, whatever path they choose, whether it's college, the workforce, it's just, you know, these are really big, real-life issues that I think are important for them to learn. And it was really, really great. I don't know if, you know, Nathan, we were gonna, originally, we were going to bring in some of the people to speak, but obviously the learning highlight was great tonight, too. So we'll take the backseat for that. But, but yeah, it was a really great thing. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone involved, you know, from, like I said, from Amy and Teresa, our entire wellness staff, and then all the teachers at the high school for really being flexible and letting us have the seniors do that that day. So it's an update there from the wellness department.
And from that community wellness lens, right, that we're looking at social emotional learning and mental health, super grateful to be on this team because I think it's a really wonderful representation of the fact that Foxborough understands, right, that to build up our social emotional learning, to have positive mental health, we need to have all of these other physical pieces in place, right? We need to have food security and be healthy physically before we can get to that point. This morning, some folks from Foxborough were really lucky to be at a DESI conference. And we got some really lovely remarks from like the secretary and the commissioner of DESI. But the person who stole the show was Dr. Kevin Simon, who's the Chief Behavioral Health Officer from the city of Boston now. And he talked about all those social determinants for health, right? That everything is all interconnected here. So it's really hard to pull apart like which community wellness parent events we did this year, focus on the wellness committee. But definitely, I would say two that I would highlight would be, in December, we had Dr. Elizabeth Englander from Mark come and do a presentation for families. And what she does a really amazing job of is pulling that focus into that digital wellness, right? Because you cannot have overall wellness without having digital wellness, without setting boundaries for yourself and for your kids and all of those pieces. So I feel like what she shared with our community really is one of those building blocks of wellness. And then additionally, as Jen was talking about, in December, we had student presentations about vaping. And prior to those presentations, we sent letters out to families to let them know that we were going to be doing these presentations, grades five to 12, and also giving some conversation prompts for families so that when their kid came home that afternoon, if they were a kid who volunteered information, they would be ready to ask about it. And alternately, if they were a kid who doesn't volunteer information, they knew what was happening and they had those conversation starters. A few weeks later, we had the same presenter come and do a virtual evening for parents and share some of those conversations, facts about vaping, some of those addictive behaviors, things that families could do to sort of have those discussions and also interrupt that cycle. I think that was a great piece for all of us at this table to be able to work together on that. There were some lessons learned. You know, we saw that our youngest students were really very receptive of this information. And it felt like the right time to give that to them. And then also, I think we were all thinking about ways to have for our older students that student voice piece, especially when we saw how receptive folks were to Wes, a young adult with lived experiences with mental health in the spring. So I think there are a lot of places that we can go next year as we continue this work.
Well, thank you very much. What a comprehensive, like so many, so many things going on, right?
Yeah, all good.
Yeah, all great.
Unbelievable. Yeah.
Any thoughts, anyone? Any questions? Yeah.
Surprise, right? Yeah, no, I, thank you guys. This is a, just a really affirming evening, Amy. Excuse me, Dr. Burdos. Just really grateful. That's, that's, that's the word that comes to mind. Just so much gratitude for what you're doing, for not only for the students, but for the families and for the community. It's really, it's really important. And I'm just really proud to be a part of a community that supports this and that has such wonderful people that want to make this happen for all of us. So thank you.
I love that you use that word proud because I've been using the word pride when talking about our town and our teachers and our administration, like how proud I am to be here and see all the wonderful things that you guys are doing for our students and that our students are doing for each other. It's just such a great environment right now. And it feels, I feel really proud to be in the front row watching it all. Brilliant. Thank you.
I think gratitude was the great, perfect word, perfect word. Just gratitude and gratitude for the extra time and effort it takes to not just pay attention to the norm, but stay on the edges or and/or outside the box. That senior days, that's hard work to put those together. It really is. I've been involved with things like that. And I don't know if people understand what it takes to coordinate, you know, the movement of the entire class into this and that, and then control the projects. And thanks to have the junior step up. Thank you for stepping up to lead, lead conversation, student to student conversation. How cool is that? So thank you. Gratitude. You nailed it.
Oh, excuse me. Nate's going to say.
Oh, go Nate. Yeah, go.
I just have a question for the committee, I guess. Vaping has become a big, big problem at the high school. A lot of students are very upset. And I've heard it's similar at the Ahern, which is not good. So I was wondering if there's like a way the committee has thought about like sharing more resources and making it well-known to like all students on like how they can get help or ways to stop or really any resource that can help them to, because I hate the firearms.
Well said.
So we're working on just in general, like mental health resources. So here in Foxborough, we all have access to William James Interface. Any student in Foxborough has access to that. And with their parent or guardian, they can call to access sort of those behavioral health resources. Something else that we have in the area, we've been working with the DA's office. And then we also have SAFE, which has recently moved their office to Franklin. But SAFE offers free substance abuse treatment and discussions and all of those different pieces to anyone who's interested. So I would say if a student is looking for resources, I think definitely the first stop would be SAFE. And also reminding our students that we have lots of really open-minded, supportive staff at the middle and high school. And they're there to have the conversation with you and help kids bridge that gap between them and their parents and what they really need.
I also think that we spoke in our last meeting a lot about, you know, it goes along with what you said earlier, Nate, is the student voice, you know, and finding a way for, for you to have, to get genuine feedback. I mean, the surveys that we do are good. And I, but I think that beyond the surveys, we have to get kind of some of that senior save choice day conversation, those small groups, which we discussed in our last meeting is getting that genuine response from you guys and having you really voice what it, what affects you more. I mean, we say, we joked a lot that we're a bunch of adults sitting around a room deciding what's best for kids sometimes can be really difficult without the student voice. So I think, not to put it back on you, but you know, we're here to support, but also we want to include you in these discussions and would welcome you at any of our meetings as well.
And your guidance departments in both the middle school and high school are phenomenal. So like urge your friends, your students that you know are having problems to reach out to them because they have the resources that can, you know, put them in touch with people that can help them because they're not alone. So I don't want anyone to feel out there that they're alone. We have a lot of resources.
Thank you.
And I know you don't like the fire drills. We don't either. They're interrupting of the days. So in that, I think part of the committee, we talked about just trying to do those preventative stuff. And I think when Amy said with the younger kids, really, that those, that up presentation that really resonated with them. And they were talking about it. You heard them talking about it. So I think our focus is like going to be on that, that moving forward for sure. Because if they didn't, if they don't start, they don't have to ever learn how to stop.
That's true.
And I didn't, I wanted to also add, I know last year, we talked about looking at the wellness policy and making sure that we include mental health in that. And we haven't forgotten about that. And we will be looking at that. And I know there's a policy subcommittee that's on. So we'll be giving our, our recommendations to that for sure.
Thanks, Nathan, for asking the question. You said student voice.
Absolutely.
So take the takeaway at this moment, it was the student voice that asked the question.
Love it.
So thank you. Right on. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you. That was great. That was awesome. Next on the agenda is our parent volunteer and PTO update.
Yeah. So this was something that we had knew last year. And Sarah, I'm not sure, was it?
I think it was two years ago when I'd come on, I suggested it.
Do you want to do the intro then?
Last year was the first year.
Or was it last year?
Go from the intro.
So, well, I have nothing prepared. I'm done, guys. I think really the why behind and why this was instituted last year, then we'll invite our members up to the guest table.
So there's a few pillars. My background is PTO. I came up through PTO and BIT. And there's a few pillars of what we do on the school committee. And one of the pillars was budget. And such a, Foxborough PTOs and PAC across the board are such a powerhouse when it comes to raising funds and really being engaged with the teachers, the faculty, with the students, with the administration. And they quite honestly move mountains. They really do. And I thought it was so important because they do play a big part, and they are the unsung heroes of, you know, the front and center budget at the school, each school level. So I had brought it up and someone thought it was a good idea and put it on the agenda and said that we could do it every year. And so I think that highlighting all their efforts, number one, but their accomplishments. I mean, it's amazing. So.
So if we can have our leadership from our PTO and PAC come to the table, we'll have you each introduce yourself. But as you're making yourself available to our questions, right, at the guest table, I think the other piece that I would like to add that really struck me last year when we were hearing from our leadership, from our PTOs and PAC, is at this table, when the things were shared, it was the ideas from different school to school. They weren't closely together. So we have a parent leaders group that Dr. Burrows and I meet with every two to three months and share ideas at that point. But I think that what really struck me, based on doing this for the first time and everyone else to hear that, is it really does kind of have that wow factor when you think over the course of the year, how much is done and the opportunities for our students to have our parents participate in different ways, but then the opportunities that it provides for our students. So we are so grateful for all of the work that you spearhead and then all of the parents that are involved to be able to make it happen. So Chelsea, do you want to start with you? Is that all right?
Sure. I'm Chelsea McHugh. I'm on the PTO at the Burl School.
I'm Sarah McFay. I'm the PTO at the Igo Elementary School.
Denise Bukowicz, I'm on the PTO for Taylor, Taylor School.
And maybe just kind of talk about the events that have taken place this year and some of kind of the highlights. There's many, but what kind of stands out?
Sure. So I am actually the new treasurer. So I was voted in just recently. And I'll be, next year will be my first year. But part of my kind of pitch to join and to be voted in was just, I was amazed. My daughter is in kindergarten. This is her first year at Taylor. And I was just blown away by the impact that the PTO had. And I just wanted to be a part of it. So, you know, at the beginning of the school year, the sock hop, you know, the movie nights, the kids just looked so forward to these events. And it's all organized, everything purchased, set up. The decorations were just like over the top fun. And then, you know, just seeing, going to all the PTO meetings and Principal Stanton just asking, you know, for something like new soccer nets in the PTO. And because they do so many of these events and they raise so much money, we can do that for the kids. We can provide them with these kind of things for them, the school, and it's awesome. As a parent, I was thrilled to see my daughter be able to experience these things. But now, you know, being the treasurer, I'm just like so looking to join and give back and try to contribute to that. So it's been fun.
Thank you.
So this year was really the first year since COVID that we had everything brought back. We had most of the things last year, but this year, getting the parents back into the school for the Icares reading program and things like that. And then we also, just because of that feeling like there was a loss of community in the past few years in the schools, we were trying to implement new things that would really speak to that. So we are doing a float in the Founder's Day Parade, the Igo Schools. We're really excited about that. The theme is Peace Love Igo. And so we have our spiritware shop that we launched this year's Igo specific year. And we have Peace Love Igo shirts. So excited about that. We're going to have the float and we'll sell snow cones. And there's a bungee jump and all sorts of fundraising things that we have planned for that. We're raffling off a chance for a couple of families to be on the float. In addition to buying tickets, good deeds are things that people recognize in the school, students can, you know, earn a raffle ticket. So it's not just buying and paying for it. We launched the Igo Garden this year. So we have a couple of grow towers in the cafeteria. They're planning to bring that into the school. Hopefully by the end of the year, we're getting tight. They just built a few raised beds for vegetables. And we have a flower garden. And the fourth graders are doing a garden club committee. So we're bringing a lot of people in to help, like it's all volunteer to help build it and maintain it. So it's a lot of work. We, the PTO gave a gift to the school for the new electronic sign. If you all, if you have seen or where, we're really excited about that. Our sign has been, poor Christine Holsky has just been dealing with that year after year. And so we were really excited to give that to her and to be able to utilize that to have a lot more things again that we're sharing with the community. And as opposed to Christine hiking out there in the snow and taking each letter, you know, she can just change it daily. So excited about that. And then, I mean, the other schools have done enrichment programs. We hadn't had anything more formal. And so this year, we're actually in the middle of it. We're in week three or four of our VIP program, Vincent Igo Program of Enrichment. And we wanted to try and offer something to the students. We didn't want to offer it to a fee because even, even though we've had scholarships, there's still like a barrier for people to be able to go. So we reached out to parents and said, who will lead it? And we had four volunteers and stopped at that. And we did a soccer cheerleading, sports conditioning, and a float decorating with a meet one day a week for four weeks. And so after school for an hour, we have the kids and it's all volunteer-led. It's going really well. So we're excited to like to open that more broadly and like the other schools to a ton of programs, but we just were starting small to see how it went. And then there's still, I feel like this is, when we think about the year, there's still a lot of things to come. May is, and June is a big month with the family picnic and volunteer appreciation night, field day, Founder's Day. It's all happening in one week. So we have a lot planned for the rest of the year, but really excited about what we've been able to do and, and getting back, you know, to help with the community.
Thank you.
Awesome. So I think what you both spoke about is community. That's what we've talked a lot about at the Burl, as well as being like inclusive. And I think a lot of what we're able to do does lend itself to being inclusive, right? Kids all have the same school supplies. That's, I know, sponsored by the, the school itself. But, you know, every kid gets to go on a field trip. I was just talking, my mom was in town, and I was just saying that, like so many kids, when I was growing up, couldn't go on field trips, right, because they didn't have that opportunity. And we're able to, as PTOs, right, we do raise a bunch of money. But to me, it's always so every kid can experience everything and never have to stay behind for that. The other thing I think that we do, we just, just finished, and the other schools do it, are the third and fourth grade productions. I know the Ahern just had theirs as well. I think it's such an incredible thing. It's so important that, I mean, the fact that these like eight, nine-year-old, 10-year-old kids can get on the stage and memorize all this in front of 200-plus people blows my mind every time. It's like a few days before I'm like, how is this going to come together? And it always comes together. But I'm always like blown away. And just the orfam in town that the other schools use, it's just so incredible that we have that, I think, in our town and that we're able to utilize that. The Burl this year, we've never had a mascot. So the other schools have. It was super cool. Our kids voted on it. They like nominated what they wanted it to be, went through the process, voted on the Bulldogs. So now the Burl Bulldogs. And so we have spiritware and stuff. So that's been super fun. And also like a learning experience for the kids as well. So, yeah, we also bought kind of same thing. We did spiritware and sold it, but we wanted to make sure that if we had a spirit day, every kid was able to have, you know, spiritware that said Burl Bulldogs. So in addition to what we sold for spiritware, we did a separate shirt for every kid in the Burl School. So we were able to do that as well. But yeah, I think it's just really exciting to have everybody back, back in the schools and volunteering. And we have like, it's like a race when you put a signup genius out, like everybody wants to sign up. And I think that's so great to have so many parents that, that want to be back volunteering.
And last week was Teacher Appreciation Week and the parent groups, what they did for all of our teachers and staff. And just really, you know, and I know they made a point of saying it's teacher appreciation, but it's staff appreciation. And I know that all of our staff felt appreciated. It was such a wonderful testament to our community and all that's done for each of our schools. And there's a lot of volunteer hours in so many different ways. And I think that's the other piece is you're showing ways that parents, your attendance at meetings has really gone up and has been great. And the principals are so thankful. But at the same time, there's so many opportunities for parents to be able to volunteer in different ways. I'm sure, Michelle, you probably have some other things, too, you could add.
I know. We should, we should represent for the Ahern a little bit.
Yeah.
I was going to ask Sarah, are you going to make a career out of this?
No. Following in your footsteps, Michelle.
No, I, I just, every time I hear about it, I'm always like, almost jealous, like I wish I could be there again, you know, I could do it all over again. I think what you guys are doing is just fantastic. And just each year, it just gets better and better. And the involvement is more and more. I, I hope soon like they can get that kind of involvement at the Ahern. I know that one is still a little lacking, but I just think it's valuable.
I do, I do just want to say, someone isn't here from the Ahern, but I want to give them props because I still follow them and I watch them on social media. They are so active, doing dances and all kinds of different things. Like they're doing, they're doing, they're doing the good work there, too.
They are. It's just a little less on the parent involvement side on that. But it's a little tougher on that end.
And I'm sure you don't have to limit yourself to the Burl. If you really want to go back and do it, you don't have to be a parent. They would welcome you, all of them would be.
No, I think it's great. And I, I love to see the update. I think this is great that you come here and do it. But think about it, Sarah.
Thank you all so much for everything you do. It's so many hours, like you said, just so many volunteer hours. And it's all, let me tell you, as someone who's done it, just like you, it's all great work and being a part of it, you'll never regret it. You will never regret not a minute of it. I was driving by Igo, thinking of the Igo picnic and like wishing I could go back to those days. So thank you.
Well, you're welcome this year.
You'll take, you'll take newcomers to help and support you, won't you?
Yes.
100%.
Order pizzas, come and sit down.
There you go.
DJ.
Well, thank you very much for taking the time, just bringing awareness to using this opportunity to, you know, scream out and say thanks and how much you enjoy it.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. Yeah, yeah. I think next on the agenda is our Guidance Services Report.
How's it going?
Great. Thanks for being here.
You're very welcome.
I'm going to have Mr. Savidio here in his role as the Director of Guidance.
Andy, do you need the thing that?
You've worn many hats. And so now going back to the Director of Guidance, so.
Yeah, yeah. I did this about maybe 12 years ago. Laurine was away or something. So I did it then. It's been, it's been a while.
But as you know, this is part of your annual updates as far as having this guidance update.
So there's a ton here. And I guess it's, I don't want to take you slide by slide because we have like 48 slides and nobody really needs that. But I guess I just want to highlight just some, some basics before we kind of get into really the report. The Guidance Department was pretty consistent for a long time. We had pretty much the same staff for 12, 13 years, just the same. Like nobody came in, nobody came out. And then we had Chelsea Mulanzen come in as a part-timer when Erin Hillybottello kind of split between social work and guidance. And then I went to administration for a couple of years and Bruce Hamilton came in. And then I, when Laurine retired, I went back to Guidance as the director. So there's been a lot of change. We have Ellie Warren on board now. Meridian Peterson's our new secretary. And then we have Hannah LeBeau, who took over for Ellen Pillsbury. So even the past year, the place looks very different, which is, in a sense, it kind of makes me sad because I think of coming into education. I was 26 years old, starting. And it's like, this is, this is the best department. I loved it. It was awesome. But I feel like now we're at the point where we need to just grow. We. I feel like now we're at the point where we need to just grow. We, there's no more of what we've done. It's what we need to do going forward. And I think we have a great team that we were able to put together over the past year or so of some veteran experience and some new faces. And I, I'm really excited for what we are gonna be able to do over the next handful of years to kind of bring us into the 21st century and kind of update what worked and bring in new initiatives and focus on things that we maybe haven't focused on in the past. So I am excited for the future. And that's just something I wanted to start with. One of the things that we've really kind of focused on over the past couple of years is transitioning students from middle school to high school. And there's a lot in here. We go through the timeline. So we start with, you know, there's a seventh and eighth grade open house and we invite all families from middle school to say, hey, come to the high school. This is what we offer. This is why we prefer you to come to Foxborough High School over a private school. And you know, there's certain times that they're gonna go to a private school. It's a legacy. Dad went to a certain school. That's where they're gonna go. But for the students who are on the fence, it's like, we, we do a great job at the high school. And it's, it's not specifically the guidance department that's a great job. It's the school, the school in general. We offer a lot. And we want students and parents to understand that they're gonna get a fantastic education. They're gonna be, they're from music. We know how great the music program is. Our department's awesome. Athletics are great. Like it's a fantastic place to be. So we want students to understand that. We want students to understand the, the courses that we offer and the rigor. So we do the program studies night. We, we have meetings with the students at the Ahern in eighth grade talking about course selection. We go down to the middle school or sometimes middle school staff comes up to us. We talk about transitioning for students who have specific services, IEP needs, things like that. We want to make sure that everyone is getting exactly what they need. And then we have really the, the end of the year, the eighth grade move-up day, which is in a couple of weeks. It's June 9. And the eighth graders get to come up, see what Foxborough High School is all about. And then over the summer, our link crew works with students. It's student-led. They, we have a couple advisors, but the students really are the ones who are reaching out to, to the eighth graders, welcoming them, the first kind of face that they see at Foxborough High School. And we want to make sure that when students come into Foxborough High School, it's, it's gonna be scary. That's fine. It's okay. Like, but we want them to know that it's a welcoming place. They're gonna be okay. There are faces there that are gonna be able to, they're gonna be able to recognize right out of the gate and kind of ease that tension, ease that worry and make sure that they have a great experience. And then when I look at our, our students over here, they went through, I mean, granted, it was a little weird the past few years, but they went through a transitionary period. And I don't care who you are. You come in as a freshman and you're kind of like, all right, this is, this is a weird environment. And then all of a sudden, you're a senior and you're leaving. And then it's, it happens before you know it. So we want to make sure that we're really focusing on students coming in. So then we can almost like immediately like focus on them going out and being successful. We, we try to do that in a variety of different ways. So we use a bunch of different communication tools. We meet with students. We talk with parents over the phone, emails, blast. We use Teams a lot now. There's just a variety of different things that we're trying to do to reach out to families and students and making sure that everything that, that's going on in the school and everything going on in our world is communicated out to everyone else's world. There are some times that we know it as, as educators, we know like, okay, this is gonna happen X, Y, and Z. But for a parent, they might not know that. So it's important for us to communicate all what the inner workings are going on. So, so everyone's in the loop. As parents, you know that sometimes students don't always tell you everything. So we want to make sure that we're kind of reaching out as well. So I'm gonna jump through some of the stuff a little bit. One of the things I want to talk about right now is our mental health team. So we've had our mental health team, a variety of different names over the years, a variety of different like combinations of, of staff. So this year, it's, it's our administration, our guidance staff, our school nurse, and our social worker. And then Amy Maldani's with us as well. And then we have other people who kind of come in and out from time to time as we need, as we need them. And we're really focusing on kind of two sort of areas. We're focused on specific students and specific needs for those students, whether it's an attendance issue or behavior issue. There's just social emotional stuff, like how do we intervene? How do we help? But then there's also, what are these themes that we're seeing? And what are we seeing from in general? Or like, hey, we've talked about five students. It's all the same stuff that they're going through. How do we then intervene? We also intrude the Panorama Survey. We since, since last year, we're doing it more. So this year, we're using some of that data to kind of understand themes. And I'll talk about that in a little bit as well. But we're trying to do our best to gather as much data as we can about specific students and themes of students of how we can help. We know that being a teenager is tough, no matter who you are, where you are, when, when you were a teenager. But the past couple of years have been really hard for our students. And we want to make sure that we are doing our best to adapt with what they need, to not just say, oh, we're providing what we've always provided, if that's not what they need anymore. So that's why some of this data collection is really important. And that's why the, the heads together, I think is a really valuable use of time. We use our individual counseling. We meet with students all the time for a variety of different reasons. I think sometimes there's, there's the thought that it's, you only talk about college or there's sometimes the thought you only talk about like mental health. We have a variety of ranges in between. So there's college pieces. There's mental health pieces, social emotional, there's stuff going on at home. There's just, hey, I'm stressed about X, Y, or Z. Like, I need someone to talk to. So that's actually personally for me, that's been a valuable piece of my year this year. I, that's one of the reasons I, I went back to guidance from administration. I had conversations with students as an administrator, but it was just a different type of conversation. And I, and I missed that. So I have students who, you know, the past year or two, I'd see them in the hall, hey, how's it going? And now they're coming to see me on a regular basis just as check-ins. And it's, it's a fantastic way that I get to spend my time and I get to see that they're reaching out for this, even the small things to kind of have that use of me or any of the other counselors as a sounding board to kind of get them through what they need to get through. Our group guidance, I want to touch on this for a minute. So we've had group guidance for 15 years and it's looked very different over the 15 years. COVID really put a wrench into it. It kind of went away for the most part. So this year, we were bringing it back. And we used to, we first started, we did it for 10 weeks per, per grade. So the ninth graders had it for the first quarter. And eventually it was like five weeks. And this year, we really kind of streamed it, streamlined it down and said, like, let's do a couple lessons. Let's do a few lessons. We did it right after the beginning of quarter two. We use our seniors in quarter one and our freshmen in quarter two. We, we worked with our juniors in quarter three. So we're bringing the lessons down to say like, what, again, what do, what do they need? So the goal is to say, let's keep the bare bones. Let's keep the studs in the wall. That's what, that's what we need. And now as we kind of renovate what we want to do going forward, we're gonna be able to build what the students need. So we all talked about it, the, the collection of the guidance counselors, like we could still crank out the same lessons we cranked out, but we don't know if some of those topics are as impactful as they were five, eight, 10 years ago. So let's keep the ones that we know are impactful and rebuild the new ones going forward. So actually our sophomores, we were planning on doing sophomores during quarter four, and we actually kind of scrapped the sophomore group guidance because of our panorama groups. So I'll get to that in a second. So based on our panorama survey data, we noticed that there were certain, like I said earlier, themes and trends from some students. And we focus on some of those students who met the criteria of someone we should have an intervention with to say like, hey, what's going on? And we also said, like, how else can we incorporate students who maybe have some of those strengths into those groups? And we're looking at finding ways to have, on one hand, the students who have a need, and on the other hand, the students who already have that strength and kind of combine that to, to run a group. So we've had different groups, different ways. And that's kind of the goal for quarter four, to kind of say like, how do we, how do we meet the students' needs individually and then thematically? Because there are students who even, even on their, when we look at individual panorama results, they might score pretty high, but it's maybe not as high as we had hoped. So they're not in like that threshold of like, oh, this is a concern. But it's still like, okay, well, they didn't get like, if you use letter grades, they didn't get an A. There may be like a C+. Well, that's fine, but do we want to be fine? Probably not. So let's find ways to incorporate some of them into the, into the mix as well. So talking with Dr. Donovan, we have talked about incorporating groups more so next year and how that's gonna look. We still don't really fully know quite yet. But we do know that we want to take some of that data collection that we've used, plus kind of the eyeball test and saying like, how do we, how do we kind of marry the two and then give the students what they need when they need it? So the goal is to still have some sophomore group guidance next year and kind of get back on track, getting into Naviance and that type of stuff. But in the moment, based on where panorama was, we were like, there's a clear need here. We can catch them up on Naviance next year. Let's focus on the need right now. So that's, we're kind of in, in the process of going through that. So there's a lot of timeline stuff, standardized testing. So this is an area that we talked about back in the fall when I was presenting the scores of SATs and ACTs. So more and more colleges are going test optional. So our numbers for students either A, taking SATs or ACTs, or B, taking them at the high school are dropping more and more. We actually decided to not run the pre-ACTs this year. We, I pretty much had them ordered. I had like the rough schedule set up. And I'm like, ah, well, we'll, we'll delay it a little bit. And then we were like, with all the other things we have to do to help our students, why are we gonna focus on this test when less and less students are taking it? So we just ran our second administration of the PACT, PACTs back on, what's the 15th, April 15th. We had between October and April, we had 10 Foxborough High School students take it over two administrations. So we're like, all right, if we had a total of like 80 students take it and only 10 of them were Foxborough High School students, is this really the best use of everyone's time? So we said, we're, we're not, we're not gonna focus on the PACTs. We're not gonna do the ACTs. We're not gonna be a test center next year. We're still gonna keep the SATs. Our numbers have fallen, but it's still the test that students take. And I think that's always the way it's been. It's, the SATs are a more popular test amongst students in, in Massachusetts. And students are like, I'm taking one and I'm only taking one. And if that's the case, let's focus on the one they're gonna take. So we're still gonna run the SATs next year, which will be all digital. And it looks like we're going into SATs and PSATs digitally. So PSATs 100% in the fall will be digital. And it looks like the SATs at the very least by the spring will be digital. So those are some things that we're gonna have to kind of adjust over the next couple of months. But we, we just said, we, we said, there's so, so much going on. We need to, we need to focus on what really matters. And that's kind of the students and their, their immediate needs, their mental health, their, their academic achievement and not the tests that they're not actually taking. So we're APs, we're wrapping up APs. We got through the two weeks of AP testing and now we're in late testing, which you take that deep breath Friday afternoon of last week, like, oh, I got through the two weeks. And then you have a couple this week, which this week is, is much more, more doable. Both Allison Warren and Erin Haley Batello are kind of tag team in our, our APs and they do a phenomenal job. It's the amount of work and the amount of hours and coordination is, is unreal. I, I kind of pride myself in being pretty good with logistics and organization. And it's, it's a lot, even for me who can kind of wrap my head around. I was like, that's, that's a lot to, to kind of handle. So they do an amazing job. And our students are still taking AP tests. They're still taking AP classes. They're, they're doing a great job with everything. So we just, we're excited for students to continue to challenge themselves. So I talked about back in the fall. We want students to take the class because they want to take the class, not because it's AP and not say, saying like, okay, I'm, I'm not gonna get a five on this, so I shouldn't take the class. Like, take the class to take the class. Like, if you feel like you can hang academically in the class, you should be taking it. It's less about the, their actual test score. College information. So Bruce Hamilton is our college advisor. He's, he's amazing. He's on paper, he's a part-time employee, but he is basically a, a full-timer. He works an amazing amount of hours. He does so much. He's, Dr. Donovan and I get an email every Sunday, hope you're having a great weekend. Here's some updates. He's just, he's just a workhorse and he works so well with the students. He's so knowledgeable. He, he really, he, as someone who was a guidance counselor for such a long time, like this is like his perfect role. It's just the, the college stuff. He, he, he always has a creative way to say like, oh, how do, how can we do that? And how can we do this? And he just loves working with the students. And he, he reaches out to all of them to make sure that they're getting what they need. And whether you're first in the class or last in the class, he's gonna meet with you and he's gonna find a way to kind of help you out for whatever you need after high school. So he's an amazing resource. He actually works with our Boys and Girls State as well. He coordinates with the man who runs that. And he's, he's kind of taken that by the, by the lead and he loves it. He loves it. He does a great job. He's very valuable to us. I want to talk quickly about just a couple nights. We had, back in September, I think it was, we had, it's the senior night. And then we had an October presentation for juniors. And it's really about letting students and parents know, in the beginning of the year, these are things you need to know about. So as a senior, hopefully they heard some information last year. Granted, it was a little different. It was virtual last year or whatever. But we want to make sure that it was more like focused, not on really the college search. It was some stuff in the beginning, here's some basic things you need to do over the next couple of months, but really about the financial aid part of it. That's the scariest part for all of us. And then in October, when we met with the juniors, that's to kind of say, hey, we don't want to present this information to you in June. You have all of junior year to figure this stuff out. So if you don't do a college search today, no big deal. You're not behind. But we want you to, we don't want you to wait till June. So we wanted parents to understand the timeline, what to do, when to do it, just the different things to look at, Naviance, things like that. And then in March, we had the college admissions panel where we had representatives from some colleges around here, UMS Hammers, Quinnipiac, a couple others, and some students. Students talked about their experience about applying. And, and then the student, the T, excuse me, the reps talked about just what they're looking for and what makes an application look good and what makes it look kind of like meh, and what makes it look bad. So it's, I think a helpful tool for students and parents to understand as they kind of start getting into the process. Did some college visits for students. So some students are definitely going to college. Some are definitely not. So New England Institute of Technology, UMS Dartmouth, Mass Bay Community College, Framingham State. There was just some of the ones we did this year. It was a combination of Ellen Pillsbury and Bruce Hamilton, who kind of led the charge on, on those. Talked about Naviance a second ago, but that's something that I, I think is one of the best things students can do with the college search. So if a student's like, I have no idea what to do. I'm a, I'm a junior and I haven't started the process yet and it's almost June. Great. No big deal. Start with Naviance. Just play around a little bit. Look at schools you're interested in. Look at schools you've heard of and just kind of see what might be a right fit for you. That's the, the first step they can do on their own. And then there's obviously like meeting with us and having the conversations. But those are just the quick things. You can see with the scattergrams, just kind of shows you who gets in, who maybe doesn't get in based on GPA and, and test scores. So it's, it's available resource to kind of have that visual. And this is actual data from students from Foxborough High School over the past five or so years. So we always say that if you're a student who, you're in the, the far top right corner and you're surrounded by a bunch of green and that's where you, where you're living, you have a pretty good shot at getting in. And if you're surrounded by a whole bunch of red Xs, probably not gonna happen. We're not gonna say no, but keep another couple choices on your list because it might not happen. Transcripts. We have recommendations letter, letters. So we use, send the transcripts, send the rec letter. We send some school reports. All these things have to go to college. We send them a couple of times a year. And then when we look at our overall numbers, they're pretty consistent for the most part with the four-year college. When we go back from 2011 down to right now, 79 to 83%. And we've kind of ebbed and flowed a little bit in between over the, the past 11 years or so, 12 years. And I, I kind of anticipate it's gonna be around that same number. I mean, if we go up to 85, we go down to 78, like it's gonna be somewhere in that range. That's kind of where we are. And one of our goals is saying, if you don't want to go to college, that's fine, but you need to go do something. Like college is not for everyone. And that's, that's okay. If you're not a college person, no big deal. But do something, whether it's some sort of post-secondary education, get involved in something so you're a productive member of society. Career specialists. We had a kind of a unique year with Ellen Pillsbury retiring. So she was kind of a staple at Foxborough High School for so many years. And she kind of went through her credit for life fair, which I'll get to in a second. And then Hannah LeBeau came in and she's been great. She's kind of really been focusing on senior project and managing that and working with the sites and the supervisors and the students. But credit for life is awesome. We've done it a bunch of years, a bunch of different ways. This year was in-person, but also virtual. So students had their laptops with them. We were at Lakeview Pavilion. And their, the volunteers would go around to the students as opposed to previous years when they were all in booths and the students would walk around to the booth. So students could do everything they needed to do on their laptops with help circulating. And then there were specific booths about different things. So one of them was like life skills. So like tie a tie, write a check and address an envelope. You get a raffle ticket and you, the raffle, you get like prizes from some of the donations. So there were like, there's some cool stuff like shirts and water bottles and stuff like that. So it's a cool experience for, for kids. And I actually just went to a presentation for one of our, our seniors in, in AP Lang, AP Language this, this past week about making financial literacy a graduation requirement. So I don't need to get into her presentation, but it is good that we offer credit for life. But we, we all said, credit for life is great. It's a one-off. It's a great time. It's important for students to understand what's happening. I, I think they get a lot out of it. I think we probably need to add a little more to that. But the event in itself, I think, is really valuable use of students' time. So I'm, I'm excited to continue that going forward. We know that that's gonna be one of the things that our career, school to career specialist is gonna continue with. It's just, it's, it is one of the things that we really value. Teacher apprentice, we had students going down. Teacher apprentice, we had students going down to middle school, elementary schools, and then, then senior project. We have a bunch of seniors out now. We have like twenty-five, twenty-five seniors out. So it's, from what I've gathered, I haven't done any of the site visits, but from what I've gathered from Ms. LeBeau, everything's been going great. Students are right on point. First week, there were people late with submitting their timed cards and assignments. But after that, it's been, it's been awesome. So it's a great valuable, you know, experience for students. And, and we, we, we've been saying for years, there's a lot about high school that's great. And senior year, there's a lot of excitement when you get to the end. But part of it's like, alright, you've been in school for twelve years. If you can get out and go do something that's not school, go do it. Get some of that real-life experience. And some of our students jump on that opportunity, and they, they've loved their senior project experiences. And Ellen will always say, you know, there's students who love their experience even though they didn't like their placement. They are, they're happy they were able to go through that experience, and they learn from it. So we, we are excited to continue that as well. Scholarships. We're gonna go through scholarships in just a couple of weeks. We're gonna do our scholarships award night. And that's always a, a great night. And, you know, we, we have anywhere between fifty and sixty students per year. Seems like they're getting scholarships. So we're in the process, Ms., Ms. Peterson and I are in the process right now of kind of finalizing the list and getting that all prepared. But it, it's a great night for students, and you can see that they've worked hard for four years, and they're recognized on that night. That. And then our last kind of couple slides are really just the Coplick Scholarship and the John Appiah Adams Scholarship. We still have students get those every year. Students, we always get the question, like, can, if you get one, can you get the other? No, you're, you're either eligible for the John Appiah Adams. If you don't qualify for that, then you are eligible for Coplick. And Coplick is the same exact thing. You just have to do more stuff. There's like more awards you have to kind of show. Like, you have to get like threes or fours on APs and things like that. So it's a great way for students, again, who, who've been doing pretty well. They did well in their MCAS. And if they, if they're taking a couple APs, they can get free tuition to state college or university. So that's a lot of information, really fast. What questions you have for me?
Questions from any of the committee members?
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I just wanted to comment. I imagine that starting in guidance and then coming back to that many years later, it must look very, very different now than it did back then.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's interesting. So I, when I, when I left guidance in 2019, I, I was excited. I was like, oh, I'm going into administration. This is great. And then we all know what happened March of 2020. So education everywhere just changed. It just changed. So even though I'm back in the department, it's a different role, and we're doing different things because we had to. So it's, it's pretty exciting. It, it looks different, it feels different, but that's what happens when you grow.
No, but I appreciate your enthusiasm, and I also appreciate the comprehensive look at what it takes for a student to be successful, that you're considering all those options. Because I, back when I was a kid, it was just, where are you gonna go to college? And that was basically it. There you go. And so I really do appreciate that kind of, what does it take to succeed as a person? Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate, as you know, I'm a big fan. We go way back. Appreciate all the changes that you navigated this year. As you look forward into your second year, what are the measurable goals that you're looking or you're considering for yourself and for the department?
Good question. I guess, I guess I want to see, I don't know if this is even answering your question with measurable, but I guess I want to see how we can take the data from, whether it's panorama or other surveys, the groups we're having with students, and then take that, translate that back to students, and find ways to intervene to help them. One of the things that Allison Warren did with the group she's running is she did like a, a pre and post survey. So she had that pre-survey of like, kind of, where are you, where are your skills? We want to just be able to kind of take some of that and say, okay, are, are some of these interventions actually helping? Are they, are they working for students? So I think it's a matter of just saying like, okay, doing it isn't good enough. It's like, you have to do it well. So stripping things down and starting from scratch, or renovating or tweaking. I'm talking to some of the administrators last year when I was switching roles, saying like, yeah, there's certain things I'm not gonna touch. And there's other things that just need to be adjusted. So I think it's just identifying really what it looks like, and just making sure that what we're doing is impacting students. And I think what we heard from Nate earlier, and what we heard from, from CJ, is that we want that student voice. We want students to actually let us know like what's working and what's not working. It doesn't really matter if I think everything's great, if the student's like, this is a waste of my time. Like, we want to make sure that we're giving them what they need. So I think it's just a matter of collecting the right data and adjusting to it.
Thank you. Second, and I just lost it. Shoot, I just left a question. I'll think of it and send it through the appropriate channel. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the whole department for all that you do. I think what the report shows us is what we always know about guidance departments. They usually catch a lot, catch a lot of things. So thank you for that, that comprehensive report and for all the work they do.
Thank you. I'm really, I'm proud of the department. They're a great group of people, and we could not do anything without them. So I'm, I'm happy to be with them going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think next on the agenda, we're all great for time, too. We're making it. We're making it, you know? Guidance just stole five minutes from technology, but that's okay.
We'll make some adjustments.
Yeah, there you go. Next is our current, is our review of the technology education. I think Dr. Burrows, I think you're gonna introduce it.
Yes, yes. So I'll, I'll get us started as folks are coming up to the table. Very excited to see members of our technology education curriculum review in the audience hanging on. Thank you for being here. And coming up to the table, I'm gonna let Dan Darlene and Erin introduce themselves in their roles, and then we'll get started.
Good evening, Erin. I am Director of Technology.
Good evening. Dana Brozio, Digital Learning Coach at the Middle School.
And hi, I'm Darlene Reed. I'm the Digital Learning Coach at the elementary level.
Okay, so the remote is over there, so someone is in charge of the clicking. There we go. Okay. So this is our technology education curriculum review team. We had a really great cross-section of folks throughout the district. We had elementary, middle, and high school representation, leadership, as well as, as well as teachers. So, so a big group and a good cross-section to talk about all things technology education. It's a little hard to see on that TV. Oh, no, you can see a little bit better over there. So you can see here, this is the timeline for our work. We met from September to, to May. We had some, some goals and some themes as we got, as we got started. We met first as a whole group, and then we split out into some working groups so that we could focus on, on some big-picture conversations. In one of our working groups, about our infrastructure and our overall approach to digital learning pedagogy across the district. And then we had another working group that really dug deep into the digital literacy and computer science frameworks. So it really is a review that wore two hats. We, we looked at that infrastructure piece and our systemic approach to digital learning, and then also looked at the implementation of the digital literacy and computer science standards. So because we needed to do both of those things, we met together initially, broke apart into those working groups, came back together. Each working group offered each other feedback, and then we came together to synthesize those findings and, and come up with some recommendations for the review. Do you want to speak to the, the focus questions for each of the working groups?
So I'll start. So with working group one, we, we took a look at the district's strategy for the adoption and evaluation of digital tools. And our, our focus questions were looking at expectations for technology use in classrooms, both hardware and software. Making sure that our, our resources that we're purchasing and utilizing are impactful, both for, for teachers and students. Making sure that our professional development is appropriate to support educators. Being able to personalize and really deepen learning for students. And then also looking at the budgetary support that we have for maintaining both infrastructure, which we'll talk a little bit more about later on in the presentation. And then also pivoting a little bit in terms of, for what our technology program looks like now in terms of being a one-to-one district.
And then working group two, which was led by Darlene and myself, we looked more at the student experience and what we currently offer and where those gaps might be. So you'll see the questions, really look around how technology can be leveraged to support student learning, how it can improve equity and access, and lastly, how it can personalize learning for students. We also see, we took a look at digital literacy skills, where they're being taught, and computer science, where are those standards being met, and where are they not being met? So this is our, our vision for technology education. I won't read it for you right now because I want to concentrate on the bottom part there, which is something that we created. One of the first two meetings, as Stephanie mentioned, we, we met as an entire group. So we spent that time to really take a look at our current vision and then discuss what we feel digital learning should look like in Foxborough. So we kind of fleshed out a little bit more what our vision looks like. You'll see there the four categories that, that we landed on that kind of fit the scope of this review. And then with each one of those categories, you'll see a vision statement that we believe will help us to achieve the overall vision.
So as we started meeting for, for the review, and we started talking about the vision, and we developed focus questions, it came out, a couple of goals kind of percolated to the top on things that we wanted to talk about as a whole group. We wanted to develop a vision statement. We wanted to talk through a common approach to digital learning and, and really start defining what digital learning pedagogy means to us in, in Foxborough. So, so those were our two big whole-group goals. And then in addition to that, when we, when we broke out into those two different working groups, the working group that Erin and myself led focused on clarifying the process for the adoption of digital tools and making sure that we were doing the right things and, and taking into consideration the right factors when we're looking to purchase digital tools for the district or for an individual building or content area. We also wanted to make sure that our approach to professional development is, is thorough. So as you know, during the pandemic, we, we adopted a whole wide variety of digital tools in order to meet the needs of the moment and implement a one-to-one learning environment for our students. So there was a significant adoption of digital tools. And what we really wanted to do through this review is reset how we're doing that and make sure that there's, there's an onboarding process that happens when we're adopting a digital tool, and that there's also ongoing professional development that we've planned out strategically in order to support all of our teachers in, in feeling successful in the classroom with digital tools and feeling like they know how to navigate the, the digital learning space that we have in each of our classrooms. We also really wanted to make sure that we had a process for evaluating the effectiveness of digital tools, and you'll see that in a couple of slides as well. We want to make sure that what we purchased is doing what we expected it to do. And if it's not, we want to have a, a vehicle and a process to, to either amend that decision or look for a different tool that might better fit our needs.
And so for working group two, we focused on student learning opportunities and our implementation of the digital literacy and computer science standards K through twelve. We looked at our alignment of the standards with our grade-level courses and classes to see where we were meeting those standards and to what degree. We also looked at our power standards to propose learning targets for each grade level. And this work helped us to identify strengths in our program as well as gaps and opportunities for growth.
So one of the things that we realized as we were getting started with this review is that it's, it's really big. What we, and, and I think you can see that with the number of pages you have in that report that we, we gave to you. So we started to compartmentalize, what are those, what are those big-picture ideas and big buckets that we really want to make sure that we're focusing on? So we identified just these three areas of focus. And you'll find in the report, as well as in this presentation, that we really are trying to categorize what those findings are underneath those three buckets so that we can approach this systemically and really make sure that we're, we're coming out with recommendations that we can put into action across the district. So one of the things that you'll find is, is new to the curriculum review process this year. Our, our science curriculum review will have, have conducted an equity assessment as well. We've added an equity assessment as a key component to our curriculum review process. We pulled it from a widely-used, commonly-known equity audit created by the Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium. The, the actual equity audit that the Mid-Atlantic Consortium uses is about forty pages. That is not what we used. So what we did was tried to identify some categories that made sense for the technology education review and, and focus just on those categories for, for our equity assessment. So what you'll notice, you'll notice in the next couple of slides that we've identified some areas of growth and some areas of strength based on those four categories. The way that the equity assessment worked is teachers sat down, members of the committee sat down individually, and looked at a subset of about five to ten open-ended questions. Those open-ended questions are intended to be probing questions that really help us take a look at how accessible is, is, is digital learning in our district? How, how equitable is it? Do all students have the same experience? Do all students have the same access to computer science opportunities? To learning digital skills that might support communication, collaboration, creative creativity, or critical thinking? So the equity assessment allowed us to ask those open-ended questions and then use a common scale to, to rate where we believed as a committee we were at. And then through that process, we then met as a larger group, and we talked through and built consensus across those four categories and came up with some clear areas of growth and some clear areas of strength. And that's actually how we developed our goals. This is a little bit in reverse of the order of operations that we used for the review. We developed our, our goals from those areas of, of growth that we had identified through the equity assessment. And that's our vision for curriculum reviews moving forward, is to really make sure that we're looking at everything through an equity lens, and our goals for program improvement are aligned to what those areas of, areas of growth have, had been identified to be.
So in assessing equity in our standards and curriculum development, areas we looked at include our students' level of access to devices and digital content, the degree that content is available through different mediums. We looked at teacher involvement in the implementation of the standards, and whether expectations for mastery of the standards were the same for all students. This helped us to identify strengths, which include the level of accessibility of digital content, which is available on a variety of devices to students, faculty, and families. We also have clear expectations for student proficiency by grade level at elementary. Areas of growth include the involvement of teachers in the planning and implementation of the standards, and additional clarification of expectations for student mastery is needed at the secondary level, with a need for continuous review to adapt to changing technologies.
So, so again, in the area of infrastructure, some of the key questions we asked to help identify strengths and areas of growth were, do students and staff have access to the devices and software that they need to be able to deliver and access digital learning experiences? Are students and staff able to access accessibility features, whether, whether through software or through hardware that, that again promote equity? And are educational decisions around the purchasing of software connected? connected back to our district vision and strategic planning? And again, is there a process for evaluating the effectiveness of technology that really looks at its impact on student learning? So we talked again about that rapid adoption of digital resources and tools in terms of delivering education to students in a remote and a hybrid setting and going back and looking at how impactful those tools are in terms of our program and our instruction, you know, moving forward. So some of the identified strengths were that our staff and students have access to hardware and software. So again, that rapid adoption of one-to-one that we have has allowed us to really have equitable access to the tools we need to deliver high-quality digital learning experiences. However, our educational assistants that work with our students, at this time, they don't have assigned devices. They, we have device loaner pools, which they're able to access loaners. But one of the things that we know is that some of our educational assistants, you know, would benefit from having access to assigned devices. In terms of a software configuration and the tools, that we have a uniform configuration and a set of tools that is standard across the district for students and staff to access. So in terms of areas of growth, again, needing a process that we're able to evaluate the effectiveness of technology on student learning. And sometimes this is difficult to do, right? So it's that, you know, qualitative versus quantitative data, the sometimes anecdotal data. But being able to take the data that, being able to collect data and take that data and then be able to use it to really decide or determine if the technology that we're using, if the digital learning experiences and software that we're using are positively impacting student learning. Another area of growth is in terms of addressing the knowledge and implementation gap in terms of accessibility features. So we have a very robust offering in terms of accessibility features, whether that's text-to-speech, speech-to-text, immersive reader, right? So lots of features that are built into the Office 365, the Microsoft 365 suite we use. And needing to go back and do some work again during, having the rollout in that remote hybrid setting, needing to kind of go back and level set in terms of doing some professional development on what tools are there in terms of accessibility and how we can use those tools again to increase equity and access for learning for all students.
So when we talk about equity and instructional strategies, we ask questions around teacher differentiation. Do they provide student choice and voice in their instruction? Things like project-based learning and universal design for learning, removing those barriers to learning for students. You can see the strengths here. Obviously, the infrastructure is in place to handle some of these instructional strategies like project-based learning, and the tools are there to support the workshop model at elementary and middle school. And then areas of strength is the implementation and the continuous improvement around digital learning pedagogy. So we've introduced something. Are we monitoring it, measuring it, making sure that it's actually working? So we'll tell you a little bit more about that in a moment. And then lastly, an area of growth was just the support of digital learning pedagogy and the ability to leverage those tools for innovative instruction.
And our last category was around professional learning in our equity assessment. And it tended to ask some similar questions, just how are we supporting teachers and understanding how to implement these tools? A real strength of our district is the availability of digital learning coaches. We have an elementary, middle, and our new hire is actually in the audience tonight. Thank you so much, Jessica, for coming out. She'll be our digital learning coach at the high school, starting for next school year. So we're very fortunate to have digital learning coaches at each grade band that can push into classrooms and help both our students and our teachers with how to use, how to navigate digital tools to enhance the student learning experience. We also have our new teacher orientation. We have a focus during that orientation that supports all of our new staff and onboarding with Microsoft 365 products as well. So those are clear strengths. And in the identified area of growth here, you know, it's really, it's not as though this is a gap. I do want to stress that our teachers are really well-versed with utilizing technology. It's more so a reset. We've, prior to the pandemic, we were not in a one-to-one learning environment. And then we were shifting between remote, hybrid learning, in-person, and then now we're back in that one-to-one learning environment, however, in the classroom setting. So it's more so just a reset to make sure that we have consistent expectations on what instructional technology should look like in the classroom and that we have our digital learning coaches to really support the implementation of that and make sure that our teachers have what they need to feel successful with digital tools. So you saw this slide earlier, but now you can see that those goals really came out of what was identified as an area of growth out of the equity assessment. So we're really using that equity assessment to drive the work and make sure that our program changes are made through an equity lens. And you'll see these three buckets again, I promise. I tried to make them into buckets, but that was very challenging, so I stuck with a Venn diagram. So Working Group One was led by Erin Hare and myself. We really focused on the district strategy for the adoption and evaluation of digital tools. I'll talk very quickly about the things that we focused on in that group, and Erin will as well. So we reviewed, we did a comprehensive review of what instructional technology tools do we have in the district right now? What have we adopted over the course of the past few years? What's working well? What do we view as being critical? And really did an audit of those tools. We also took a look at, we actually had some old processes for the adoption of digital tools that existed prior to the pandemic that were not necessarily utilized when we had to get all of those digital tools together so quickly. However, there was a need to revisit that process, review it, and make sure that we're being thorough when we're making a decision about which tools are we going to purchase for the district to not only make sure that it's an equitable adoption of digital tools across our buildings, but also to make sure that they're compatible with our devices and our operating system and also to make sure that there are accessibility features embedded in that. That was something that really came up as being something that we really wanted to make sure the digital tools we adopted did not create barriers for our students in the classroom. We also revisited our approach to professional development and looked at a variety of research organizations. You'll find in the last page of the curriculum review report, there's actually a bunch of QR codes. If you're curious, you are more than welcome to dive deep into research. I am a dork at heart, so those are there in case you're interested.
So this past year, the Department of Education had come out with some guidance in terms of educational technology, you know, highlighting, you know, four pillars in terms of what makes a successful educational technology offering within a school district, and those being leadership, infrastructure, learning and teaching. So in terms of, in terms of the guidance, you know, this being kind of a best practice for school districts, taking a look at this, we found that we're in a really good place in terms of, you know, strategic planning, making sure that our work is tied back to our strategic plans. In terms of infrastructure, you know, planning for infrastructure, making sure that we have the tools that we need to offer robust digital learning experiences and accessible digital learning experiences for students. So including, you know, wired networking, internet bandwidth, wireless networks, devices that we have, you know, budgetary means, right, to support the infrastructure and the device refresh plans that we have. In terms of, in terms of learning, you know, making sure that the tools that we offer, that they're accessible, right, that they create equity, that they make learning possible beyond the school day and outside of the school buildings, right? And that they make learning accessible for all students. In terms of teaching, that we're providing professional development experiences with digital learning that's embedded so that those experiences are authentic for teachers and that they provide opportunities, you know, for teachers to grow and develop their digital learning skill set as well as their digital learning strategies as well. So really, you know, looking at this, taking a step back and looking at this, it's really about developing a digital learning ecosystem, right? And again, we talked about what some of this looks like in terms of, you know, you have infrastructure, which is the very technical pieces, right? The networking, the Wi-Fi, the internet bandwidth, the devices. And then we have software systems that we use for educational operations and also for learning, such as the Microsoft 365 platform, right? We use that for email and communicating operationally. And then we also use that for collaborating with students. And then systems like Power School, which is our student information system for record-keeping, learning management systems, CIF platforms, the Student Interoperability Framework. It's an information framework. It's an open framework that allows us to share information amongst our systems. Then you have teaching and learning hardware. So these are, these are devices and hardware that student and teacher are facing. So these are laptops, projectors, interactive boards, document cameras. Could be, you know, manipulative materials like B-bots for computer science experiences for students. And then we also have instructional technology content and resources. Be digital learning platforms like Freckle or Brain Pop or any of the digital learning tools that students are using, likely see them using at home, as well as contents that could be online textbooks or adaptive learning platforms as well. So then professional development, we've talked about how important professional development is in terms of onboarding, especially as we bring on new resources, whether that's assessment tools, whether it's curricular tools, whether it's just technology and training that's needed in terms of making sure that people have competencies and skills that they need to use those tools. And then lastly, something that's become more daunting, I think, in everyone's life, right, is cybersecurity and data privacy, right? So, you know, needing to keep, you know, data secure, right? And also, you know, in terms of through the digital literacy lens, right, teaching students about, you know, being responsible with their data and their online experiences and what those consequences may look like. We see it time and time again in the news, you know, whether it's a professional athlete that loses a contract or a sign, you know, a sign-on with a team because of something that may be posted online as a, you know, as a much younger adult or a child, you know, in terms of that data privacy lens. But cybersecurity, keeping our systems up and running. Unfortunately, schools and towns have become a target in terms of, you know, cyber threats, in terms of ransomware and things like that. So we saw this throughout, you know, the remote and hybrid learning session, right? That learning can be quite interrupted and educational operation can be interrupted, right, by these types of cybersecurity concerns. So lastly, in terms of all of these moving pieces working together, the need to look at capital budgeting. So we've, we're kind of retooling, looking at the digital tools that we have, really taking a purposeful look and an intentional look at what we're doing in classrooms and our school buildings and what tools we're using. So for instance, going one-to-one, we've eliminated just about all the fixed computer labs that aren't for specialized learning experiences. We've eliminated a lot of student, you know, fixed student computing, you know, in classrooms and things like that because students have devices, right? So that's, there's no need to continue to replace that equipment because it's something we've always had. And being able to reallocate the resources for those to support our one-to-one program, but continuing to look at what it will take to support the program moving forward.
Dan, can you put that one more time?
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
There it is. Okay. All right. So we did, we did take an audit of all of the digital tools that we have. This is conveniently color-coded. What you see in blue on the left there, those are all the instructional tools that we use in the classroom to support students in collaborating with each other. They support us in providing personalized instruction to students. They support us in differentiation. And they also support students in creating authentic work as well. In that, in that yellow center cone, those are, those are all of the platforms that are critical infrastructure platforms. So all of those platforms help us manage student assessment. They help us with, there are quite a few screeners on there as well. And then we also have CSOW, which is a critical parent communication tool for us. Microsoft 365 is our foundational platform as well. And then on that right-hand side, there's actually quite a bit there that are all digital curriculum. So one of the things that Erin was speaking to, all of the, all of the pieces and components that make up the digital ecosystem really being one-to-one is no longer really a choice. It's something that we, we're obligated to provide, that digital learning environment. Our curriculum materials have moved toward being online textbooks. It's, there's an advantage to that. It becomes an adaptive textbook. We can, we can get updated curriculum materials in live time from publishers. And it's fantastic to have. It's really revolutionizing education. But what that means is that all of the technology education pieces that Erin was speaking to are now a critical piece to providing learning experiences for our students that are equitable. So there's a, there's a lot up there, but a lot of that is critical. And it really truly is the case that our textbooks have been replaced with digital platforms. And it's something that we're continuing to maintain.
So in terms of, we talked about the need to really implement a standard evaluation, implementation and assessment methodology to help really raise our colleagues' competencies in terms of the selection of digital resources and technology tools. And then again, to ground that in data, that these tools and resources are having a positive impact on student learning. So we just have a sample workflow here in terms of if a tool is identified by a staff member, that they would create a proposal. That proposal is built around a rubric. And that rubric helps that staff member identify how the tool will be used, what potential other tools will, will it work with or will it replace? What other tools potentially we have that may already do what that tool does, right? So it brings them through this rubric to help them identify some different important, critical aspects of what the proposal is. And then that would then go to a committee. Committee is made up of people in the building, whether it's teachers, administrators, staff from the technology department. And then if it's approved, it would go on to a pilot in which we would, we would implement, right, in a smaller way where we could collect more data and then take that data to inform whether we would decide to expand the use of it or discontinue the use of it. So this sounds like a So this sounds like a, a very formal process. It, it could be very formal. If we're talking about a district-wide learning management platform, it's going to impact all teachers and all students, right? This process would be much more thorough and, and take much longer. If we're talking about a simple, you know, adaptive tool or, you know, a, a tool that's for maybe practice, right, or, or student practice or student exposure, to increase exposure to, to concepts, it might be much less formal and, and a much quicker process. It would be, right? So, you know, it's, it's going through this step. So, and, and part of going through the steps is to help build the capacity of identifying, you know, tools that are going to have a positive influence. Lastly, at the end, again, it's, it really comes back to measuring the, the impact. There's a lot of FAD technology out there, right? So the things that are, that are here today and gone tomorrow, you know, so again, like I think if we look at things like MySpace, right, the predecessor to Facebook, right? Like do we even, who even remembers that, right? So that was kind of a blip in the, in the radar. So just like in popular technology, social media, right, there are tools that come up in educational technology, which, which seemed to be, you know, really important at the time, but then may not have as much impact in the end as we see. So try to prevent that from happening.
So to support that process, we developed a, a rubric, an evaluation and review tool to support teachers, leaders, committee members that might be evaluating a digital tool and really making sure that we're being thoughtful and thinking through, is this a tool that is absolutely necessary? Does it have the accessibility features that we're looking for to make sure that all students can engage with this tool? And is it, is it filling a gap and filling a need in our program? So this tool would really be a, a resource and a reference for any teacher, any leader, any committee to sit down and make sure that we're making the right decisions about which digital tools we're adopting and that we're making sure that there's alignment there, that they talk to our devices and that there's also alignment where we're, we're filling a gap that exists in our, our curriculum programs with the adoption of that tool. This resource was actually developed from, I can't remember the name of the company off the top of my head right now, Digital Promise, that's it. Sorry, it's late. It was developed by Digital Promise. There's a, a wide variety of resources out there, including ISTI and Digital Promise and the Office of Education Technology that really framed our thinking in, in how we wanted to approach this and how we wanted to make sure that we were being thoughtful about rolling out a process that wasn't overwhelming for, for teachers, but also made sure that, that there was some consistency in the way that we adopt digital tools. And actually, I'll, I'll just go very quickly to these, through these slides. These are just some examples of some of the resources that we pulled in to, to shape our thinking. You know, we're no longer talking about just access to devices. We're now talking about digital learning pedagogy in a way because all learning is, is digital learning at, at this point in education. We are, we have a, a wide variety of access to tools. Our students are in teams, they're in CSOW, they're, they're on devices and they're engaging in, they're, they're learning through the digital tools that we have. So this is the lens that we have to think about when we're thinking about the role of our digital learning coaches and, and how we want to really take that next step in, in supporting teaching and learning here in Foxborough. We took a look at some recommendations for what makes high-quality professional learning. And if you go to the next slide, we also took a look at, Digital Promise has a playbook for digital learning coaches that's very useful in helping us think about how do we want to really make sure we're leveraging digital learning coaches to make sure that teachers are supported and students are supported in how to utilize our digital tools.
So now we'll move on to Working Group Two, which took a look at the, the alignment of the digital learning and computer science standards and what courses we are currently offering. So when I say digital learning and computer science standards, if you have no idea what those are, luckily Darlene's here, she'll explain them a little bit more in a second. These are the data points we looked at. So we crosswalk, as I said, those standards, the digital literacy and computer science standards against our current class offerings to see which courses either partially or fully fulfill those standards. After that, we reviewed the grade level expectations based on those standards and tried to go through and identify power standards by grade level of non-negotiable experiences that students should get at each grade level. And then lastly, we surveyed surrounding schools. Between our review and the science review, we heard from a total of 18 different school districts. And as I said, Darlene's going to dig into those, that information a little bit more now.
Here we go. So according to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, abilities to effectively use and create technology to solve complex problems are the new and essential literacy skills of the 21st century. So these digital literacy and computer science standards are designed to prepare students to live in this technology world we live in. The standards are categorized into four domains: Computing in Society, Digital Tools and Collaboration, Computer Systems and Computational Thinking. And below each domain, you see the standards are organized further by subtopic. The framework's designed through its standards with a coherent progression of knowledge and skills from kindergarten through grade 12. And in their early years, students are learning the basics of how to use devices, navigate different interfaces and use basic features towards an increasing understanding of how to use technology to solve complex problems and to make technology work for us. So as Dan just shared, part of, part of our work for this review involved assessing our coverage of these standards. Again, where that was happening, what course of class and the level of coverage. We were looking at where the standards were being fully met, meaning where our students, all students in a grade level being taught these standards, partially met or not met. We found our largest gap to be in the area of computer science. While Project Lead the Way helps us in addressing computer science at the middle school level, coverage is limited and varied at the elementary and high school levels. The elementary experience has some inequity due to limitations of having a single digital learning coach addressing these standards by pushing into classrooms across the elementary schools. An experience with these standards for students at the high school level is dependent on the virtual high school course offerings.
So as Darlene mentioned, Project Lead the Way at the high, at the, the middle school takes care of many of the computer science standards. So Project Lead the Way is a STEM curriculum. It focuses on biomedical engineering and computer science standards. Here you'll see a list of the classes at the, the middle school. I would like to add that these teachers go off for summer training to learn these classes in addition to their, their normal subject. I've been the grant administrator and site coordinator since 2018 when we started this. And so now the middle school is basically fully built out. We're hoping to add Project Lead the Way Launch, which is K to five. So at the Ahearn, we have fifth grade classes. We're looking to add two modules to that and then, you know, hopefully expanding the program if we're able to.
So after identifying gaps, Working Group Two identified and proposed power standards for each domain and in each grade level. These proposed power standards will be developed into grade-level learning targets with computational thinking standards embedded in a future recommended STEM special at the elementary level. As noted earlier, there is one digital literacy coach supporting three elementary schools, not only acting as a digital learning coach for teachers and supporting all staff in the use of technology, but also supporting student digital literacy and student understanding of computer science by pushing into classrooms. A challenge exists in having one person do this across three schools. In merging the DLCS standards for computational thinking into a STEM, into a targeted STEM special that focuses on engineering, Makerspace Labs and computer science, we can guarantee equity and access for all students beginning at the elementary level through high school. And as Dan mentioned, in order to understand approaches other districts are using to address these standards, we surveyed neighboring schools again with 18 schools responding. This feedback was gathered through two surveys, one for the science curriculum review, the other for this review related to computer science and STEM specifically at the elementary level. What we found was that approaches to implementation of these standards varied. For instance, one district reported they were in their first year of implementing a dedicated STEM special for classrooms K through five with one STEM teacher per building. One reported addressing these standards through a tech and Makerspace block for fourth and fifth grade students. And in other states, we directly cover with a grade-three coding special with computer science somewhat covered in the grades through periodic push-in work with the instructional coaches or during library specials. Overall, what we learned through these surveys and the mixed interpretation of, mixed interpretation of integrating computer science was the need to take the next year to dig deeper and build an approach that works for Foxborough.
So we arrived at a, a number of findings based on this work in each of the individual working groups. As you had seen earlier, we had a, a clear timeline beginning in September onto May where about, about February, we reconvened. Each of the working groups shared out their findings and we gave each other feedback and we started working together and arriving at some recommendations based on, based on what those findings were. So again, all of our findings and recommendations are going to be categorized into those three buckets.
So I'm going to start off with the, the digital literacy and computer science standards that we found. Before I do that, I forgot to mention that our Project Lead the Way classes are fully grant-funded up until now, which has been a huge benefit for us.
That's important.
Yeah. So with the digital literacy, computer science standards, as Darlene mentioned, we've seen inconsistent approach across K to 12 of how teachers actually implement those standards. The strengths were in our digital tools and infrastructure. And then as Darlene just mentioned, the gaps we found in computer science at the elementary and high school level. And then lastly, that our curriculum standards in these digital literacy, computer science standards are living separately, when ideally we would like the digital learning and computer science standards embedded into those curricular documents. So that's, you know, a goal for down the road.
So in order to do that, in, in the PD category, we really want to make sure that as part of our approach to professional development, that digital learning and computer science standards are really infused into that. That does not mean that all teachers would be teaching computer science. It's really the digital literacy side of things that would be infused into our academic content areas in, in building student digital literacy skills using our Microsoft 365 platform, making sure that our students understand the accessibility features, our teachers understand the accessibility features, and we're leveraging the DLC model that we have in order to support both students and teachers with using digital tools to communicate, collaborate, create and think critically. I believe those are the four Cs.
So again, I'll, I'll go through this quickly because I know we've talked about this quite a bit, but in terms of our, our adoption of technology during remote and hybrid learning, you know, it was, it was rapid, it was quick and it was, it was purpose-built around that need. Therefore, not all of our resources or decisions around the resources which we have are grounded in analysis of student impact. So there's that, that need to go back and to take a look and level set where we are in terms of, of resources. Because of the need for remote learning, also the, the funding for these resources was offset by SR funds and, and federal funds that were provided for us to provide learning experiences and, and remediation for students in terms of lost learning. So we need to go back and also take a look at, after we level set, in terms of the resources that we have, what kind of budgetary support and, and needs there are moving forward in terms of continuing on and supporting our digital learning program. And then lastly, what we found is that our, our tools that we use are, they're preparing students to enter, whether it's college or the, or the workforce, the Microsoft 365 platform. It's used by four out of five of Fortune 500 companies. It's commonplace and it's, it's a, it's a skill that's transferable for students, whether they're leaving us to, to go to college or to enter the workforce.
So to support equity and access for our students to digital literacy and computer science, we present the following recommendations. For summer curriculum work to further support the alignment of grade-level DLCS standards, to expand computer science and engineering offerings at the high school, we'll explore opportunities for an elementary STEM special, we'll embed digital learning in future curriculum reviews, and support teachers through digital learning coaches in understanding digital learning, accessibility tools and pedagogy.
So our professional development recommendations include a annual digital pedagogy survey to assess and help us plan for future professional development needs. Continue to share and promote Microsoft Office Training, including Microsoft Innovative Educator Training, and creating a hub of resources for the learning community. As Dr. Burrow has mentioned earlier, our new teacher orientation, we're looking to beef up, beef up with a little more digital literacy skills, as well as weaving the digital learning coaches into the ongoing mentoring program. And then just lastly, are a couple of strategies to leverage the, the DLCs in terms of just-in-time trainings, newsletters, study groups, and establishing some consistency with how we, and when we push into classrooms.
In terms of recommendations for the adoption, evaluation and evaluation of infrastructure, we talked about developing a, a standard, again, implementation, sorry, evaluation, implementation and assessment methodology for digital learning tools, hardware and software, with an emphasis on, you know, professional development, equity and universal design for learning. Develop a five-year capital plan for maintaining technology equipment and infrastructure to support our teaching and learning program. And establish a common approach to digital learning pedagogy with a focus on the Microsoft 365 platform and the features and functionality that it provides.
So once we have those recommendations, we started to think about how we could map this out over the course of the next few years to make sure that those recommendations were manageable and, and something that we felt confident that we could implement. So you'll find underneath the digital literacy and computer science standards recommendations, there's summer work that we would typically prioritize coming off of a curriculum review. Embedding digital learning into future curriculum reviews is, is something that we can continue to look at in, in curriculum reviews moving forward. And what we mean by that piece is really making sure that the digital tools that we're considering as part of our, our program review process are tools that are compatible, there are tools that support and enhance existing programs or where we want those programs to move toward in the future. We, we also want to take a look at supporting teachers and understanding digital learning tools and pedagogy through our DLCs, and that'll be done through our, our approach to professional development. And we also wanted to make sure that we took a year to, in concert with our science curriculum review, explore opportunities for that elementary STEM special that we spoke about earlier and see what makes sense for Foxborough and what's feasible for, for us at the elementary level in order to support all students with not just digital literacy and computer science standards, but that opportunity for experiential learning and hands-on engineering experiences that you find in those Project Lead the Way modules at the elementary level for kids. Also underneath professional development, again, we tried to phase that out and map that out so that we could create some consistency across what we were planning on implementing with regard to professional development. Dan mentioned earlier that annual digital pedagogy survey. That survey would really That survey would really be the tool that we would use to identify which features through Microsoft 365 do our teachers really need support with. And that'll feed into the types of study groups that we could offer, the types of just-in-time workshops that our digital learning coaches would be able to offer, and what we might feature in a digital learning newsletter for our staff moving forward. We do want to make it a priority for all of our digital learning coaches to become Microsoft Innovative Educators. That's actually a free certification program that Microsoft offers to its users, so that's not something that has a cost attached to it. And in doing so, all of our digital learning coaches could become well-versed with the accessibility features, the ins and outs of Word, of PowerPoint, and of Excel, so that they could support teachers in utilizing those tools in the classroom in meaningful ways. We can move on to the next. And then lastly, we certainly need to launch the rubric for the adoption and evaluation of digital tools in a way that helps it feel accessible to our teachers and really explains that need to make sure that the digital tools that we're adopting are in alignment with our vision for technology education and are also compatible with our devices. And one of the big-ticket items that we plan on working on beginning this summer is developing that sustainability plan that Erin spoke to earlier. It's going to be really important for us to sit down and map out what will it take for us to maintain the one-to-one learning environment for our students and for our teachers to make sure that the devices that they have make sense for what the expectations are in the classroom and to make sure that we're funding that moving forward. A couple of budget implications here, Erin had spoken to earlier about, I'm going to start backwards, about how SR funds had allowed us to adopt a variety of digital tools with our budget being approved. That's not necessarily an ask to the school committee, but it is about $45,000 that we've absorbed into our regular budget. Bill had spoken to earlier this year in the budget presentation about the need to create a district-wide budget line to support some of those digital learning tools that are district-wide, that we are viewing as being critical to our infrastructure moving forward. That $45,000 represents Freckle, CSaw, Lexia, and Fastbridge. So Lexia and Fastbridge are actually, they're literacy screeners that are critical to supporting our students in identifying where it is they may need intervention and how we can support them with our curriculum resources. And Freckle and CSaw as well are, those are adaptive, Freckle is an adaptive platform that allows us to personalize instruction and allows students to practice skills within that platform at their own pace, and that's something that we've also absorbed as well. The 2.0 FTE increase that you're seeing there with the elementary STEM special, there's going to be a lot of conversation moving into next year about what this could look like. Just to speak to where that 2.0 comes from, it's actually 3.0 combined when we speak to the elementary digital learning coach that we already have full-time. That increase of 2.0 would allow us to have .5 DLC and .5 STEM special in each of our three elementary schools in allowing that, allowing us the opportunity to really make sure that all of our students are getting equitable access to STEM opportunities. Darlene had spoken to earlier that our students are getting exposure to computer science opportunities, however, it's one person pushing in across three school buildings, so that can be very challenging to do. And it means that there's not as much frequency with which students can actually interact with B-bots and learning how to program in Scratch or in another platform as well. And then, we only anticipate a small amount of summer curriculum work because digital learning is actually something that's everywhere in the district and not something that really requires a massive undertaking in terms of summer curriculum work, but it will require us to sit down and make some sense of those grade-level expectations that Work in Group Two had developed and look for ways to integrate that into our academic content areas to make sure that all students are building that skill set across the district.
So Dr. Burrow shared this year, you know, part of what we'll be doing is developing that comprehensive budget plan and capital plan. It takes a look at sustaining the one-to-one program, as I talked about earlier, looking at what our educational technology environment and our classroom environments look like and what they'll look like moving forward. We talked about the sunsetting of fixed labs and fixed equipment. At the same time, we're collecting data about our one-to-one program, things, collecting data about costs related to accidental damage to loss, too, with mobile equipment, it's being moved, right? It's not necessarily as durable as fixed equipment in terms of the life cycles that we're getting. Also lessons in terms of, it's not just the cost of acquisition, but the cost of repair. And then, in terms of SR funds allowing us to go one-to-one in one single year, right, in a very quick amount of time, also creating kind of anomaly for us in terms of refresh where over a million dollars worth of equipment ages out at the same time. So needing to look at things that are a little, strategies that are a little more creative, like talking to our representatives about creating technology stabilization funds that would allow us to kind of save for some of these costs, but also looking at things like leasing and financing, which would potentially allow us to enter into a large refresh cycle again, but then spread out the cost, right, into a more typical, you know, capital budget process, right? So almost similar to the budget process that we use now, we're acquiring, so, but instead of acquiring the equipment, we would be using those funds to make, potentially make lease payments or finance payments on that equipment. So researching what that looks like so we can come back with recommendations for how to make that work.
Okay, what questions do you have for us?
How much time do you have?
Oh, yeah. Thanks. Questions, anyone?
No.
I have a lot of questions, partially because this is just, it's been a long time since I labeled myself as a dork, but maybe that's what it is. So I have a lot of questions. My primary question is, as a committee, what is it, we have, you know, action item on our agenda, what is the action we are being, what is the action request here for us?
I believe that was a typo.
Okay, okay, so that was my first, so thank you, because I'm not sure when I'm supposed to be taking action, so I appreciate that. I have a ton of questions that are probably, take us until the next meeting. My initial comment on this is, I love the science behind all of this and the process behind all of it, so thank you very much for all of that. I am very intrigued by not only the adoption process, but you call out very specifically the sunsetting process as well, and I appreciate that because that's the hardest thing for most organizations when they embrace digital transformation, is to understand when something is ready to be retired. And you have built that into your process, and I think that's fantastic. My other question, as we're talking about Microsoft, is where does AI fit into all of this? Of course, that's the one piece that I didn't see referenced here, and maybe it's a subtext, but it's happening fast and furious. You've built in technology, you've built in digital learning reviews into all of your technology adoption plans, but I don't see anything about AI. And I just think that we've at least got to have some mention of it, whatever that means. I know Microsoft has their approach to it, right, but I think we've got, I think I would, I would want to see a little bit more just mention of that or acknowledge that it's going to be coming faster and furious in the Microsoft world, which has tended to be, in cases, a little bit behind some other places, or excuse me, some other platforms, but it's here, and we got to know where it fits in.
Great point.
Those are all my points, but thank you. This was fascinating and educational, and I'm just, again, so grateful. If that didn't come through in all of my comments, I'm so grateful of how thorough and how dedicated you've been to this process, all of you and everybody else on the committee, so thank you. Okay, I'll stop now.
Anything?
No.
Anything?
Thank you.
So I have a question, all the listings for 2324, so that's the year one, that's right around the corner, including summer professional development. So my question is, are all those 16 items on the deck and moving in a direction as we turn the corner very quickly to 2324? I assume that they are.
Yes.
And they're there and they're going to happen.
Yes.
So, or that's the intent, right?
Yes, yes.
Good.
So, and some of them were, some of them are naturally in motion, you know, as part of the digital learning coach team. Some of them are already naturally in motion, the things that we're intending on building as a team with our digital learning coaches are all, all things that are manageable and part of our regular, will be part of our regular work year. There's only a little bit of curriculum work, but then that other piece is the building capacity and leveraging our digital learning coaches to make sure that we are building the capacity of our, of our staff and of our students to use those digital tools. I did want to mention, there is actually a little bit of AI in there, if you're familiar with the, some of the platforms that we use. So Freckle, for example, and Alex are actually, they're, it's adaptive technology.
Right.
So we are, AI is already here in terms of, you know, being, being in our classrooms. That kind of adaptive technology is leveraged to differentiate for kids and tailor the challenging questions that they're getting so that they're moving through them at an appropriate pace. So that's something that we're already seeing, as well as all of those accessibility features that Erin had spoken about earlier that Microsoft has. They're really incredible features, the speech to text, the immersive reader, all of those, all of those aspects, all of those features that Microsoft products already have and that some of our platforms already have. I know Common Lit in the middle schools have that as well. We're seeing assistive technology as something that removes barriers for our students and for our staff, and that's really what we want. We want digital learning to make it, make it the case that all of our students, including our students with disabilities, have the opportunity to engage in grade-level content. And those adaptive tools are giving us that opportunity with those students, so we're grateful for AI. I know it's a barrier and something we should be thinking about, but we are already utilizing that.
Right, and so that was a subtext, so thank you for that. And I'm just looking forward to the resurrection of CLIPIT as something that's going to come popping up back on our screens at some point. That was all for you in the back row. Yes, who remembers CLIPIT? No, and so, and the other piece is, and I'm assuming that our professional development adoption technologies also have that built in, because it's a huge barrier remover for adoption.
Correct, yes.
I was also going to thank you for pointing out the elementary, the two FTE going forward and how we can address all of our different schools. Thank you, Jessica, for being here, so we have a good step in the right direction in the back of the room. Mr. McCabe and Dr. Woz in the back as well, thank you for being here to support the Technology Committee as well.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for some great hard work.
Thank you.
Lot of work, and thank you.
Daunting and comprehensive.
Phew.
Yes, lot of work. Our kids are in good hands, thank you, our students.
Wow, there we go.
I'll take it.
Thanks, thanks.
Thanks.
So next is, Sarah's going to talk a little bit about the MAS C Day on the Hill.
Yes, so Michelle Thaxton and I had a great day on the Hill. It was the first one back since COVID. Because of open meeting law, we don't send around group messages and things like that, so I wanted to speak a little bit at the meeting about, number one, how fantastic the day was. I don't know how to make this, which, ah, there we go. I wanted to just introduce the agenda. Everybody on the committee will have access to this so that you can see, we heard from Senator Jason Lewis, State Rep. Denise Garlick, State Rep. Steve Yoldrino, they all spoke about the bills and the process and the passion, and the budget had just been sent to the Senate from the House. So everybody, you know, was big on talking about the initiatives, you know, and the budget and things like that. So we sat in on this, they spoke about the overall landscape of education in Massachusetts, specific bills that were before the Massachusetts House and Senate. Oh, I went too fast. Current, the Massachusetts Association of School Committee current legislative priorities list, this is really, I don't know, we felt like, both of us felt like it was really important content, really important priorities that really will filter down and impact our schools and our students and our families. So again, this is, I'm not going to go over every single line or anything, but it's content that will be available to the entire committee. Lunch was catered by a myriad of vocational technical students. I wanted to point out that Southeastern Regional was there, it was great to see our Foxborough, you know, Voc Tech students represented at the State House, and they did a beautiful job, and everything was delicious, and it was great. So we met with Senator, we really didn't know what to expect, we both kind of went blind. So we're sitting in the morning session, and they said, okay, we hope you have your meetings with the legislators. I looked at Michelle, she looked at me, we didn't know. So I said, hey, let's take a walk. So we did. So we actually, when we went to Senator Feeney's office, we crashed the Southeastern Voc Tech meeting, so we sat in with their superintendent and their school committee. So we took a picture, and this is Jen Souza, our newly appointed Southeastern representative. So we got a chance to kind of hear some of their conversations, they were having some strat, you know, strategic issues on buses, looking for extra funding, things like that. So anyway, we did catch Senator Jay Barrows, or State Rep. Jay Barrows as well, so we sat down with him and, you know, he talked a lot about what he was doing and some of his priorities. So again, I don't want, I know it's getting late, they, you know, just spoke about how they were, everybody was budget, budget, budget. So that was a big thing because they had just passed it, so, okay, well, I don't know, whatever it says. Yeah, we had a great day. It was really exciting. And it made us both, and I don't want to speak for Michelle, but we did obviously debrief sort of in the car on the way home, and it is a wonderful, it's wonderful to feel that you can make a change at this volunteer position on the school committee, something that we do in our spare time. Like, people can really make a change. So I urge for next year, I urge either more committee members, and P.S., there was a shout-out, there was some students there, so I urge students, I'd love to extend an invite to students, to administration, anybody who would like to go, because it was really valuable day. I don't know if you want to weigh in real quick, but sorry.
No, it was like, I had, you know, obviously, I just started. It was a lot to take in and just realizing the depth of everything, it was, it made me really excited to be part of this and realize just, you know, how valuable doing this kind of work is, and it really was very inspiring, yes.
Well done. Thanks, thanks for telling and bringing that to our awareness as well, too. I've not attended in my time, although I've known it existed, but it was really great for you to step up and go in behalf of our town, but all the towns in the organization, the MAS C across the state.
Yeah, it was great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next on, we have other matters. Just before we pass it down the line, I did want to just take a second to recognize Paul Beck, who's in the back room there. I think a couple weeks ago, I think he got a Rodman Legacy Award.
The presentation's going to be this coming Thursday.
Yep, so thank you, I saw that recognized on social media, so Paul, thank you for being there for us, thank you for being there. I think legacy is a pretty good word for you, Paul, because I think you've been doing it for a heck of a long time for a lot of people in this town. So your expertise for many, many years, so thank you, Paul. many, many years, so thank you, Paul. Yeah. Other matters, Michelle?
No.
No?
Yes. Real quick, pickleball courts are in over on the Payson, and the grand opening ribbon-cutting will be next Tuesday, I believe, at 6:15, and there, people can sign up for pickleball lessons and, sorry, I just want to make sure I'm correct on the time, 6:00 p.m. next Tuesday, we're really excited about that, so that's a really awesome community event, and I do just want to recognize the Foxborough varsity softball. I got to spend a wonderful afternoon Friday with, they, they don't have any seniors this year, so they did senior day in conjunction with the human services and invited senior centers, the senior center, and had an open invitation, they served them hot dogs and water and popcorn, and we got a win. It was nine to seven, nine to two, they won nine to two that day, so it was really wonderful, and I think it was a really great initiative. You all know I love to see students stepping up and thinking outside the box and doing wonderful things for the community, so this is just one more of those examples, so thank you, Foxborough girls varsity softball.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Anything else? That it? Great. Before we go down the line, I wanted to ask a question of the committee under other matters, not a discussion point about the mascot issue that has come up over the past month and a half or so, but there has been reach out by the public at different times to have dialogue about the issue still, probably to this day. And so I wanted to ask the interest of the committee for a possible public forum. We have a policy in our handbook that allows for open hearings and open public forums, and maybe a public forum dedicated solely on a given date to the singular topic might have value for input and feedback, so I was looking for the interest of the committee for an open public forum date in the, you know, relatively near future. Any thoughts about that? Not about the issue itself, about the forum concept. I would support it myself, so that's, you know, one of the other reasons I brought it up.
Okay.
And you know what other people's opinions are?
If you're looking to go down the line, I'll start. I think that anytime you create an opportunity for people to get up and talk about what they're passionate about, I'm never against that, so.
Great. Thoughts, Rob?
Yeah, I think that we've always had the opportunity to have forums on topics that are of interest. I think the challenge, and I, so if this is what we feel like we want to use this type of vehicle for, it makes sense. The challenge with any forum is to understand what it is you're trying to accomplish, what it is you're trying to learn, what it is you hope people learn as they attend and walk away from it, and it has to be handled by an incredibly skilled facilitator, particularly when the topic or the intent is one that has people that have passion about their perspectives. So that would be my one ask, if we're going to do it, we need to make sure that we have a very tight intent and that we have very specific guidelines and that we find a very talented and ideally neutral facilitator.
Thank you. Michelle?
I'm all for an open dialogue. I do know that tensions are running high on both sides, I just want to, again, more to Rob's point, I just want to make sure, we set a few ground rules to keep it civil, like, we want to make sure that it, we don't go off the rails, this doesn't become a, I don't know, like, we don't want it to get out of control, we want it to be like a very productive discussion, so I'm all for a productive discussion. But yeah, I just want to set a few ground rules about, you know, behavior and policies and stuff.
And expectation.
Yep.
I mean, I think that the key with any of those things is, it is a discussion, but what is the expectation of how this session is going to happen? What is the endpoint, right? What do you want to come out of that, and what do you hope to accomplish by it, and how do you know when you're done?
And we aren't, the intent of the discussion is not to, at the end, make a decision, right?
No.
So then, we need to make that clear, this is a discussion, so at the end, there will still not be a decision made, you know, so we don't want everybody coming down thinking that something's going to, something's going to happen, and then it doesn't happen.
Agreed. I think our policy sets forth a desire, the policy is very clear.
Okay.
The policy in the manual sets forth a desire for organization and expectations for the event, the hearing, and the forum as well, too. But I, my interpretation of the policy is that it's a hearing forum atmosphere, not a decision, not a, not an agenda item with vote, it's a forum hearing opportunity. So we will continue to check into the Town Hall, we've started to, you know, consider possible dates, we have some school committee dates as well, and maybe we try to accomplish that and have that open forum and singular topic with parameters. So if we're all in agreement, then I'll start to work in that direction, and we'll try to set a common date.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much for that feedback, I think it's an opportunity for anyone who's out there listening who may have wanted input and feedback. Great, great. Open Matters, thank you all, thank you very much.
I would just say it's Spirit Week, our seniors' last day is Friday, it is amazing that it's already upon us, getting excited for them, want to congratulate all of them, we don't have another meeting at this point until after graduation, which is the first Sunday of the month. I'll sadly miss it this year because my own son is graduating from high school at the same time, same date, just want to congratulate all of the hard work of our seniors, we've been, had a lot, you know, a lot of AP testing that's been going on, getting ready for finals, closing up the year, and their journey, whatever that might be next, is an exciting time, and to congratulate them and their parents for supporting their long journey.
Thank you. Dr. Burrows?
I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to the casts of Wizard of Oz. I was very fortunate to have some time on Friday evening to attend one of the shows, it was excellent. Mr. Walker and Ms. McCann did an amazing job with those kids, and you could tell they were just having a great time, and it was an amazing production. It was just really a fantastic experience.
Three days left for seniors and 22 days left for the rest of us.
Thank you. Raise anything?
That's all.
Thank you very much. Well, before we take a motion, thank you all for, it's a long meeting, a lot of important topics today for us.
Very.
And a couple of good presentations, but thank you all for your time as well, too.
Thank you.
We do it, and we've done through it, but we got through it. Motion to...
Do adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Four, zero, zero, meeting adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.